Good evening and welcome to the town accord in Madera Clinic Commission for Tuesday, April 23rd. Please call the ball.
Commissioner Kenny?
Here.
Commissioner Boshierer?
Here.
Commissioner Vandell?
Here.
Chair Rizzo?
Here.
And Chair Chase?
Here.
Please join me in a smooth to the title. I pledge allegiance in the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, thank you. So at this time of every meeting, we open up the meetings for public comment and that which is not on tonight's agenda. So I'll give you three minutes to say something if you'd like. We have no one in the room to contribute tonight, so do you have anybody online with a hand raised for this section?
I do not.
Alright then, we will close that. We will not have any public comment. And we will go right to our new hearings. So, tonight, we have two items. Both are administrative and significant. So the first one is a public hearing to consider proposed ordinance amendments to portions of Title 18 zoning of the Port of Madera Municipal Code to implement programs in the Port of Madera Housing Element Cycle, Sixth Cycle, related to emergency shelters, low barrier navigation centers, and applications for reasonable accommodations. We can keep reading, we'll turn it over to Martha.
Good evening, Chair Chase and members of the commission. Now, this is a follow-up to the discussion you had in March. And tonight, you're considering the ordinance amendment related to these three topics. And they are all related to implementation of our housing element. And they are all required to comply with state housing law. So both emergency shelters and low barrier navigation centers are defined by state statute. An emergency shelter has minimal services. It limits occupancy to no more than six months. And it states that no one can be denied access because of inability to pay. A low barrier navigation center differs in that it provides additional services to individuals. And there's an emphasis on locating people to permanent housing as soon as possible. It also is a housing-first model, which means that it uses housing as a tool and not a requirement. So for instance, if someone is struggling with addiction, you wouldn't say you have to not use in order to obtain housing, you provide housing. And it's a tool to help people overcome whatever they may be experiencing. It also removes barriers to entry such as allowing partners with pets and having a storage. Next slide. So since 2008, housing element law has required jurisdictions to allow emergency shelters by right in certain zoning districts. So in 2015, the town amended the public and semi-public facility district to allow emergency shelters as a permitted use in that district. And in those 10 years, we have not received any applications for emergency shelters. And we do not anticipate receiving applications even with these amendments. And that's for a variety of reasons, land in Southern Marin is very expensive. Also, to operate these facilities is also very expensive. I spoke with someone from Homeward Bound to Marin that shared that the staff costs alone are over $100,000 a year. And that's because shelters, regardless of how small they are, always have at least two people on staff. And there's also requirements for security guards as well, because the staff costs associated with operating these are very expensive. So our existing district where we allow emergency shelters does not comply with recent state law. Assembly Bill 2339, which became effective on January 1st, requires a jurisdiction to allow emergency shelters in a district that allows residential and mixed uses. So in Port of Madera, there are two zoning districts that satisfy that. The MX-1 District and then also the C-1 District as well. Next slide. The next bill is Assembly Bill 101. And this became effective in July 2019. And this relates to low barrier navigation centers. So in order to comply with this bill, we need to amend all non-residential zoning districts that allow multifamily, and we need to make low barrier navigation centers permitted use. So this bill differs from the other bill in that we're required to allow this use in all districts that meet the criteria. Whereas with Assembly Bill 2339, we're just required to allow emergency shelters in one of the districts as long as it has capacity to meet the homeless, the need for homeless beds. So again, the two districts that we would need to allow low barrier navigation centers is the C-1 and then also the MX-1. This slide, the next slide, shows the different housing element implementation programs related to both low barrier navigation centers and emergency shelters. I'd like to point out that the second program listed on this slide, which is related to low barrier navigation centers, states that we will allow this use by right of multifamily, mixed use, and non-residential zones. We are not recommending that we allow low barrier navigation centers in the two multifamily zones, which is the R-2 and the R-3 District, because that is not required by state law. So we're only allowed, required to allow it in non-residential zoning districts that allow. And then the last implementation program related to emergency shelters, we're required to complete this within one year of adoption of the housing element, which is in June of this year. Next slide. This additional implementation program is related to granting reasonable accommodations for persons with disabilities. We did not talk about this at the last meeting. This implementation program was included in the housing element because of a concern raised by HCB. There are several criteria that staff would use to evaluate a request for reasonable accommodation. And HCB felt that one of these criteria was too subjective. So the ordinance amendment includes a change to subsection E of this particular section of the code. So as I mentioned, there are two districts in Port of Madera that allow residential and mixed uses. And that is the MX-1 District and the C-1 District. And in order to comply with Assembly Bill 222339, we must amend at least one of those districts to allow emergency shelters as a permitted use. So we're recommending that the MX-1 District be amended. And that is because there are better transit options along Tammel Vista Boulevard. And also, it's close to services that would be beneficial to people experiencing homelessness. And then the next piece is in order to comply with Assembly Bill 101, which is related to the low barrier navigation centers. We need to amend all districts, all non-residential zoning districts that allow moving. So again, there are two districts, the MX-1 and the C-1. So for low barrier navigation centers, we're required to allow those by right in both of the districts. So this slide shows the parcel zoned C-1 in white pink. And those parcels are generally around Old Port of Madera Square and then also along Tammel Pius. And then the parcel zoned MX-1 are shown in green, and those are along Tammel Vista Boulevard. The next slide shows a parcel zoned C-1 in East Port of Madera. And this is mainly the parcels in the Paradise Drive Shopping Center and the adjacent parcels to that shopping center, which is the center with the Nugget Market. So there are a variety of ordinance amendments that are proposed. Chapter 1804, the existing definition of emergency shelter will be revised. A new definition for low barrier navigation center will also be added. For section 1812020, which is the commercial land use table, this will be amended to allow a low barrier navigation center as a permitted use. And then section 1813020, that's the land use table, the MX District, will be amended to allow both emergency shelters and low barrier navigation centers as permitted uses. And all of the ordinance amendments are included as Exhibit A to Catchment 1. In addition, section 1816305, which is part of the public and semi-public facilities district, is being amended just to change the reference of where to look for the standards related to emergency shelters. And that is because the existing section of emergency shelters is being deleted in its entirety. And a new chapter, 1831B, is being added. And that new chapter includes all of the different regulations related to both emergency shelters and low barrier navigation centers. And lastly, section 1825050 is being amended to revise subsection E. And again, this is related to the granting of reasonable accommodations for persons with disabilities. So this slide shows the proposed performance and development standards. These would apply to both emergency shelters and also to low barrier navigation centers. On-site management and security would be required at all times. There is a new lighting standard which has been incorporated into the ordinance. The existing lighting standard is not objective, so the standard has been revised to be an objective standard. In addition, there needs to be adequate parking provided. And there is a minimum square footage of an interior waiting area. And all of these standards are proposed in section 1831B020B of the draft ordinance. Next slide, this shows the operational requirements. These would be required of the operator of one of these facilities. Again, this would apply to both emergency shelters and also to low barrier navigation centers as well. Several of these are from the state statute, which states that no individual can stay longer than six months. Also, an individual cannot be turned away because of their inability to pay. And we, the draft ordinance does recommend increasing the number of beds from the current number, which is 13, to 16. And this is in line with what some other cities in Marin County allow. In addition, there needs to be staff and services that assist individuals in finding permanent housing. And the operator is required to submit a management plan to the community development department, which will be reviewed. And among other things, it needs to include an outreach plan and outreach data. And these requirements are in section 1831G020C of the draft ordinance. And next slide, this shows additional requirements for low barrier navigation centers. These are all from the state statute. And among other things, it needs to, there needs to be a coordinated entry system. And this is to help facilitate and provide to know if individuals have been in the shelter before and to help them better navigate. The next slide, so lastly, these are the options available to the commission this evening. The first is to forward a recommendation of approval to the town council to adopt the amendments related to implementation of the Port of Madera Housing Element. Second is to provide directions to staff on amendments to the ordinance. And lastly, direct staff to afterward with additional information and analysis and continued review. So that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Martha. I will say it's very strange not speaking into a microphone, you know, but here we go. So we know that you're ahead of the curve here. So we're going to ask commissioners for questions to you. So Dan, do you have any questions?
I'm going to add just a few. You know, I read through everything you provided, you did a wonderful job. I'm still having a little trouble differentiating between emergency shelter and low barrier. Because the low barrier also allows or accommodates residential. There doesn't seem to be any limit on the number of beds or how long people can be there. I think, and so, and because we have it allowed in different zones, some explanation of why it might be appropriate, why, for example, emergency shelters might not be appropriate in C-1. Your report says, "Staff believes that significant new construction for emergency shelters is highly unlikely." Yet, in the mixed-use zone, most of those buildings are so large that they're, you have to question whether they're actually going to be able to be reused for emergency shelters.
I think it's given how expensive land is, in staff feels it's more likely that this use would go into an existing building versus a new building being constructed. I know there's also been a shift by many providers where shelters are seen more as a Band-Aid solution. And really, to solve this problem, we need additional affordable housing. Because since individuals can only stay in a shelter for six months, once they reach that six months and there's no place for them to go, then they likely just end up that long on the street. So there has been kind of a shift that's taking place, where the emphasis is shifting less away from shelters and more towards providing permanent supportive housing such as the La Casa Buena in Port of Madera. And so, you know, so for those reasons, we don't anticipate that we're going to have new construction of shelters built in Port of Madera. And I do, I agree with you that it's confusing, the statutes are confusing. And they're fairly vague. I don't know, Amy, if you have any additional you want to add about that?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with you, Commissioner. It's a little hard to distinguish the difference. And I think we just have a lot of individual legislators in Sacramento that are drafting and housing legislation. And so, we don't necessarily have a whole lot of consistency among these. But it's clear that we're required to do this under the housing, our housing element. And so we'll need to move forward for that. I think, I think Martha's right, both governments and providers are moving away from emergency shelter because it isn't a solution to homelessness. And I know that Marin County just got $18 million to build some supportive housing and to move away from the shelter concept.
So is it possible to add a limit to the residency within low barrier or the number of beds?
So the same standards that apply to emergency shelters were also applying to the low barrier navigation centers as well.
I don't think it's in the code stuff you've provided.
So if you go to the draft ordinance, page, on page eight are the requirements for low barrier navigation centers, 1831B030.
Any minute. Which section?
1831B030.
Yeah.
And in subsection C, the very first, number one, that it needs to comply with the requirements of section 1831B020BC and D. So those are all the different standards for emergency shelters. So everything related to emergency shelters, but also low barrier navigation centers.
That means a minimum six, maximum six-month residency and no more than 16 years.
Yep, and the lighting standards would apply.
Okay. See if I have any other. Well, I can't find it, but I have a question. Because in the ordinance, the signature page for the commissioner and the council is a page by itself. And I think it would be better if some of the text in the previous page is on the signature page or the signature page is moved over to the page previously.
Oh, for the planning commission. For the resolution.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I see what you're saying, because there's.
Otherwise, that page is a signature page floating all by itself.
Okay.
Okay, that's it, Peter.
Okay. Yeah, I get what you're saying. Alright. Commissioner Boshierer?
Okay, so the first question, will I need to recuse myself and vote because of my address today? I know last time we didn't have to because it was just comments, but. I think they're okay.
Okay.
Alright.
Good question.
I always, you know, need to make sure. Okay.
Not off the hook.
Is there a number of the shelters that Port of Madera need to provide except those 16 beds? Like, is it, I understand 16 beds per residency, but do we have a number that we need to fit for the residents?
We don't. Any Assembly Bill 2339 states that you need to provide, you need to zone enough districts to meet your unmet housing, which is based on the 2022 homeless count, which was the last official count of homeless individuals in Marin County. And there were three observed in Port of Madera. So we need to demonstrate to the state that we can at least provide one year-round shelter that will meet that need of three individuals. There is a standard in the draft ordinance that any shelter be 300 feet from another shelter. And that's a very common standard that a lot of jurisdictions have in their ordinances.
And will they, so if the zone is approved today, will there be any work done to accommodate the zone for the accessibility and ADA, like reworking of the sidewalks and adding additional parking and so forth into the zone prior to someone coming in and the shelter?
No, there wouldn't be. The parking that's required would be evaluated at the time in the future we receive an application. And as far as the sidewalks goes, private development, they often need to improve sidewalks. But I don't know if that would apply in this case, as it could be seen as a barrier to this use. So we'd have to kind of think a little more about that if there was sidewalk repairs that were necessary.
Yeah, I was just thinking, because if we do provide accessibility in the shelter, said, well, it should also apply. But yeah, okay. And then the, so for today's vote, it's mostly for the zoning, not necessarily the design regulations that will happen if, when the shelter is going to be built. And so, all of the, I have a lot of questions in regards to, you know, environmental impacts, like how we can help the shelter to regulate that. But that probably wouldn't apply due to kind of that it's just the zoning approval today, correct? Okay. And then just one general question. What measures will be in place for when the shelter organization, like nonprofit organization, comes in and decides that they want to put the shelter? Will we have any ordinance in our municipal code that would prevent for the day use of the parking lot? So shelters only for the night only? And then the person who is willing to get out from the shelter, where do they go after that? What regulations will we have?
Well, I think, so the state law is very restrictive on what we can impose. It's Government Code Section 65583B, no, A4B, says, "Emergency shelter shall only be subject to the following written objective standards." And there's a few things that we have in the ordinance. The maximum number of beds, parking size and location, exterior, interior, onsite waiting, client intake areas. So we have a little bit of room there to talk about that. The provision of onsite management, we would have a management agreement that would address some of these issues. The proximity to other emergency shelters, provided that shelters aren't required to be more than 300 feet apart. The length of stay, lighting and security during the hours that emergency shelter is in operation. So we've got those, those are the objective standard for permanent, under state law. That's what we have. But I think it will really, should anyone want to open a shelter, the management plan would really address those types of issues. Yeah, I think all of the questions would be for the future, so they are not related to the zoning.
Alright, thank you. Martha, do you have anything on your plate there?
I, yeah. Are there any of these two variety of shelters in Port of Madera now?
There is not.
Where is the closest?
There are several shelters in San Rafael and then Nevada. Those are the only two jurisdictions in Marin County that have shelters.
So from what I just heard, the requirement for Port of Madera is really only to provide a shelter of some variety, one or both, for three people?
Yes, we need to demonstrate that the shelter can meet the unmet need of the homeless population. There was a recent, the 2024 Time and Point Count occurred in January, and we don't know what those results are, they'll be released in May. So there's a chance that number could fluctuate.
So we're not required to provide for all of Marin County, just for those situated in Port of Madera? Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. And then I had just a question, there's one part of this that says, "Prior to beginning operation, the shelter operator shall submit to the community development department a written management plan." And what should be in that management plan? And does the community development department need any kind of special training to evaluate those kinds of plans? To me, shelter accommodation is a very specialized form of service. So what kind of training is going to be provided to people evaluating the plan?
That's a great question. And usually when, well, first of all, I will say that as planners, we're, we have to become a quick expert in a lot of different things. So this is not unlike what our team normally does. But if we were to review a management plan, it wouldn't just be the community development department. So we would also include central Marin police and coenforcements, whole city management team, to make sure that it's really checking all the boxes that everyone's concerned about. So in Port of Madera, we don't have a lot of experience with emergency shelters or low barrier navigation. But there's certainly a wealth of expertise elsewhere in the county and in the region. So we would not be reviewing something in a vacuum. And we would, as always, really be trying to protect the community and make sure that we're balancing all the needs. But so applying to state law, because we are very limited in reviewing this type of use.
But so applying to state law because we are very limited in reviewing this type of use. But that, it would be our utmost concern that we have the right management plan and the right components to make sure that all those issues are alleviated to the best of our ability.
And just one other, and this is, I don't, I'm not sure there's any part of this that could be addressed in this document. So tell me if I'm wrong. My concern is that in the, Corte Madera is small, and in the sites that are listed as available or possibly available, it seems to me that they're close to schools or churches or schools and churches actually can be used as shelters. And if there's no requirement that people who use these facilities stop using drugs or stop using alcohol, what's going to happen to the children and families in that area? How would they protect it? Are they protected?
It's my understanding, I spoke with someone, the co-executive of Homeward Bound Marin. I mean, they operate several shelters in Marin County, and they have a no harm reduction policy, which means they won't tell someone if they're using drugs that they can't have a bed in the shelter, but they can't bring any alcohol or drugs onsite. So it's not tolerated that people are using while at the shelter. But if someone is substance abuse, that's not a reason why they would be admitted to be in the shelter. They, operators also, if there's an individual that isn't following the rules, they can get kicked out of the shelter. So the operator, it's in their best interest that they're not creating issues in the neighborhood. And I would just add that there were concerns when the Casa Buena Home Key Project started, that there would be perhaps substance abuse called by police and so forth. And I know that the Corte Madera convened a committee to work with the county and the provider to help make sure community was apprised of things and that the provider understood the community's concerns. And, you know, it is, should someone decide to open a shelter, the providers want that project to be a success. And I would imagine would be open to meeting with community representatives and would be working with the community to make it a success. And, you know, it doesn't, you know, even, you know, the laws will still apply. So if someone is, you know, using drugs, selling drugs, the police will be called and laws will be enforced.
And just one more point, if you read the point in time count from last year, it does show that many of the residents are Marin County residents. And I'll just give you my experience with permitting Low Barrier Navigation Center. My previous job, that included emergency shelter and affordable housing, 120 beds. And now that it's open and running, we know the average age of the occupants is six. So there's also families and children that could be housed. And so proximity to schools and churches may actually be a beneficial supportive piece. But state law is really restrictive on what we can say as far as citing. So you'll see that restriction on proximity to other shelters to really reduce concentration. But it really doesn't allow us to reduce the limitations of our other sensitive uses. So that, just wanted to throw that out.
I guess the saving grace is that we don't think that many will come to that, want to open a shelter in this area. But I still have that concern.
Yeah, I think it's interesting to look at this in the lens of our small community because they're, based on the most available data we have, there, we don't have a lot of unhoused people. But the state law really requires us to take a look at those metrics. And that's why Martha's drafted the numbers the way that she has.
I don't plan to be in the question.
I just want to follow up to Margaret's comment there about this. The entity that might propose such a facility or facilities would be a private entity essentially. Is that right?
Yeah, right.
Nonprofit, so we hear the story about San Francisco wanting to impose that restriction on people, users of drugs and so forth. But some of those facilities are funded publicly. Can Corte Madera even impose certain types of restrictions on a privately funded entity like that? Can you even do?
I think what you're seeing in other jurisdictions like San Francisco is that the city is putting money forward to hire an entity to help alleviate the issue. So it's through that agreement where a lot of that is flushed out. But most jurisdictions have to fund entities to partner with to be able to alleviate the issues for, because most governments aren't going to operate their own emergency shelters without a nonprofit being involved or without the right expertise.
Got it.
So there's another layer.
Yeah, so through, if, through a contract, you can impose additional conditions. So I think San Francisco does spend a lot of money to hire providers and can impose conditions that way.
Got it. Okay. Mr. Russo.
So it was, we had adopted public and semi-public buildings to be for emergency shelters, what was it, 2008?
2015.
2015. And are we also going to impose a low barrier navigation as well on those sites? Or just for this meeting, it's just going to be at these two new zones?
It's these two new zones, I don't think we will recommend, I think we were recommending that the public semi-public still be an appropriate zone for this use site. So we weren't removing that zone or just adding the two new zones?
But this public and semi-public currently is just for the emergency shelters, not for the low barrier? And I was just, just wondering if.
I think you're seeing the nuance between two separate pieces of legislation. And that's why they're allowed in different areas. They weren't thinking of this holistically when they wrote the legislation.
Yeah, I'm just curious. And then, so I know that it's been on the boards that we want to develop by them all, which is C2, which would have residential in the future, is this something that might come up as? And I don't even know if you guys are rezoning that one because there's no residential allowed in that zone currently. So I guess looking forward, is that something that will be imposed on that district at the time of rezoning for residential?
In the future, all of the commercial zoning districts will be rezoned to allow multifamily. And one of the reasons is because our general plan for commercial districts already does allow multifamily, so there's a disconnect between the general plan and the zoning ordinance. So we have a program in our housing element to address that and to establish residential development standards for development in all commercial districts. So this will come up in the future. And if and when residential is permitted in the additional commercial districts, we'll also need to allow low barrier navigation centers as a privileged use as well.
Okay, no, no question. And then lastly, if a proposal comes in to change, like say, you know, one of our nail salons that we have, our 8,000 that we have in our square, and they want to turn it into a shelter. That would be a change of use. So with this code, it goes directly to, it's just by right, that typically any type of use that changes usually comes to us? Does that still come to us as a, as an item, or it just gets changed?
It wouldn't come to you, they would need to, if they're going to an existing building, they'd need to go through the building permit process. But the use would be in permitted use. It's likely that most of those charcels around Old Corte Madera Square are very small parcels. So they likely, they may not be able to meet the parking requirements or the minimum intake area. So I think we're, it'd be less likely to see a shelter in one of those Seymour personal side of square.
Until they remove the parking requirement next year, but yeah, I, you know, I just have questions. I know the commissioners were really concerned about some exterior modifications of the buildings that could take place without anybody kind of reviewing, sounding like our hands. Good question regarding that. Well, I know that they're going to get turned into, if they do, that, you know, in the building code, there's, they change that use, there's a ton.
Yeah, there are a ton of, yeah.
Yeah, there's a ton of upgrades that building to happen and make it that kind of use in the building code, so there's kind of additional requirements.
Yeah, well, that train comes out of the station, it's going to be.
Yeah. And I guess my last question is, is, you know, I think it was answered, like, there's no, I mean, objective performance development standards regarding, you know, anything that could be construed as dangerous or changing the character of the neighborhood, like a loitering or panhandling or things like that. How does that get handled? Is that just getting handled with the police law? And if something, if someone gets harassed with something, it's just treated as a kind of like, just call it in, you know, some kid riding their bike and they get harassed by somebody riding by or?
Yeah, in my experience, it's the entity that's managing the facility. So they.
Call from police saying that there was an incident or something?
Yeah, I mean, it depends on the organization, but I will say most that I've worked with are pretty responsive, and they're actually asking their populations, where are you going? And helping them, you know, navigate where they're going to go. But they're also trying to be good neighbors generally and making sure that there's not the loitering and not any kind of external impacts to neighboring properties. So that's, that's usually one of their roles.
Okay.
I have one question.
Okay.
And this is just for my own knowledge verification, maybe a little bit rhetorical, but so that I understand correctly, they impose this law on municipalities in addition to obviously the affordable housing. But why is it not combined together? Because it feels like while they do the mixed development uses for the zones and we are doing the multifamily housing and a lot of these commercial zones, the shelters could be incorporated in there. And that would be a more of a natural involvement for these shelters to be, I don't know, in the first floor of the residence that already accommodated for that use and to be a better placement of this rather than just, you know, we don't know what kind of structure or the parking lot or converted names, right? I mean, maybe that example, but I, I'm just trying to see like, how can that be more of a smarter urban planning rather than just a reactionary law towards something that state imposes? Like, do we have any say or influence in that area?
I will say, I mean, there are lobbying efforts from various entities that we're a part of. I remember when this bill was going through, and I think the Low Barrier Navigation Bill was Scott Wiener's. And I believe he was using San Francisco as a test case because these low barrier navigation centers were providing benefit, but were very limited on where they could cite. And there was a lot of regulation involved. So he, his effort was to try to alleviate the regulations and create a case where it would be able to occur in most situations. So I think he was just trying to thread that needle through the legislative process. And sometimes what comes out the other side is not ideal. That is why it's a mismatch from the other piece of legislation, at least maybe a year previous. So they're, they're not always, like I said, holistically looking at how one issue is handled throughout the whole government code. So, and this trickle through to becoming a requirement in our housing element. And that's why it's before you tonight as part of this larger package of just housing element required zoning amendments. Because as we were going through review, it was noticed that we had not done this yet. So it's most of the time not agreed fit, but it will be changed over time. You can look like the best.
Yes, thank you for explaining.
You're right, I do have two questions I missed, but if you want to go first.
No, go ahead, Daniel.
Yeah. In the ordinance, in page six, section 10E, the language was changed. You know, we talked in the last meeting on this issue, you know, we were concerned about what control or influence we might have on design. And you struck the language that was here, and it was new language. Do you feel that that gives us a little more flexibility?
So this section 10 does not apply to the low barrier navigation centers and the emergency centers. This is specific to someone who's making a reasonable accommodations request for disabilities. So this could be a situation where someone can't meet the front yard setback because they need to make it accessible, so they request a reduction to like a setback. So this subsection E, HCD did not like our, the current language because they felt it was too subjective and the design character is just hard to evaluate that objectively. So that's why subsection E was changed. But this does not apply to the low barrier navigation.
And they couldn't?
No.
Okay. Then the second question is, in the Tiburon ordinance, they make a reference to outdoor facilities. And I think if you remember at the last meeting, we talked about whether there could be some accommodation for open space as part of, or landscape as part of the facility. And then also, they also make reference to refuse storage. Are those a couple of things that we could address in a similar way?
I think our current ordinance may have a refuse. If that's something that the commission is interested in adding, we should include that in the motion and direct staff to evaluate if that is consistent with state law. And if it is, we can add it into the draft ordinance that goes with the council. But we'll want to just double check and make sure it's not inconsistent with state law.
And I'm not sure how to deal with outdoor facilities, but, you know, I know they're going to require it, but is there language we could use that would address it as a, as a something for the residents that would be positive thing? I don't know how to word that if we're trying to provide direction to staff.
Are you talking about number four? Parking and outdoor facilities, so. Do you mind giving me that? I was just going to note that sometimes the outdoor facilities can be the controversial component of these facilities. So I've seen jurisdictions go both ways. And the outdoor areas may be more difficult to manage. And I think that's why the standard is in here, because it's saying if there is an outdoor facility, that it has to be designed to provide security. So, because I remember your last discussion, you talked about the desirability to have outdoor areas. And we weren't able to put that kind of standard in place. But are you asking for this?
Well, if we can't, I think that Tiburon language is something that would at least address aspects of the outdoor facilities that we might be interested in.
Yeah, we might be able to see if it's general enough. Do you, Andy, could you make that call now, or do you feel like we need to research that?
I think we should do that, if we are allowed written objective standards, the size and location of the exterior. I think we should do that. If we are allowed uh, written objective standards, the size and location of exterior and interior on site, waiting and client intake areas. And we can address security during hours that the emergency shelter is up in operation. And I think Tiburon is just saying. If there is outdoor space, security should be a consideration. I'm sorry, just lost the actual actual language.
Yeah.
So I feel like I I think that. I I think that I think that that's okay.
Well, let's see what the other commissioners. That's it, Peter. Thank you.
Okay. Um, just on that note, uh. So if a piece of property gets developed and doesn't have that capacity. You can hardly uh, impose that as a farm on the thing. Um, but if they do have it. The proposal can be, is reviewed by you guys to say if does or doesn't have the necessary components. Elseaging security or something you can impose on. Project, right? And um, those. So otherwise, it's a pretty uh, nebulous little line there in the Tiburon. Invigils, I'm sorry, uh. Uh, parking and outdoor to go show me the design. It's a but. And with refus, does not the town part of this municipal code require that there be facilities to address that? That you have that as part of a building department review? They have to have that. Somehow.
I think so as well. And we also, our current. Um, emergency shelter ordinance does include a standard regarding refuse, that a refuse storage area be provided to accommodate standardized trash bins adequate reuse of the parcel. So our. Existing emergency shelter ordinance nice have that standard.
Are you listening for more of the the number four or? Take a parking out of there? Outdoor facility shall be designed to provide security for residents and visitors and employees and surroundings. More of that language?
Yes.
Don't confuse me.
My question in in general is, uh. I read the other day that forty percent of cities and towns in California do not have their their plan approved by HCD. That's pretty high. And what is the tolerance for this not getting approved to be a part of HCD's plan? Anything?
Well, we report on an annual basis how we're doing um, and our progress in implementing our implementation programs. I don't know that they would necessarily. Go after us with sticks, um, but we potentially could lose compliance, fall out of compliance. Housing element law and there could be repercussions to that.
And they put a gold star to your name whenever you do. I noticed uh, that. There's these services are required to be provided to the residents of this case. So that statement about services being required is strictly funded by the organization that's running the facility, right?
Correct.
That's not, there's no community funding that has to be contributed to complying with. The requirements, so. And no point, and that's why you guys check the box, no uh, financial impact. Um, because there is no money, community money um, put toward function or running or anything. HCD doesn't dictate that. In the place.
And and home or boundary, and they they did share that each individual that's say that a shelter has a case manager, case manager that works with them. On um, whatever their goals may be, and it differs by individual. You know, making sure they have all the IDs that they need to get on permanent housing list. And you know, the goal is really to to look, to put people in permanent for the housing. Like whatever, you know, that that looks like for individuals is different.
Well, unless there are other questions, um, we'll take it, uh, we'll take um, public comment on. All right, so. Is there anybody wanting to say anything, Tracy?
No, sir.
Not not so, okay. No, uh, individual. Okay, so we'll come back to this. I feel like the commissioners have all stated um. What they are thinking about it. Um, I think that um. We could entertain a motion unless somebody else wants to discuss it further.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move that the commission approve a resolution of the planning commission of the town according to their recommending. That the town council adopt an ordinance to implement the town's housing on page six, cycle twenty twenty three, twenty thirty one. By amending portions of the title eighteen of the uh, according to their municipal code two one, allow emergency shelters and low barrier navigation centers. As permitted uses in specified zones. In sections. Eighteen oh four two two seven, eighteen oh four two take five, fifteen oh two two zero, eighteen thirteen zero two zero, eighteen sixteen three oh five, and eighteen sixteen three twenty. And chapter eighteen point three one B and two, clarify the objective standards applicable to applications for reasonable accommodation. Section eighteen point two five point zero five zero with the addition of language relative to outdoor. Uh, spaces as as is stated in the Tiburon uh, legislation.
And refus as well?
I don't think we need refus.
Okay, so that's well said, Daniel. Um, anybody want to second that?
A second.
Okay, let's take a vote.
Let's be. Commissioner Kenny.
I.
Uh, Commissioner Frascher, I. Commissioner Vanell.
Yes.
Vice Chair Rizzo.
Hi.
And Chair Chase.
Hi.
All right, great. Pass. Goes to council, um. Um, so then nothing else has to be said about that ordinance, so we. Move on to the other behemoth for us tonight. So item B tonight is public hearing for the consideration and possible recommendation to the town council. Of proposed amendments to title eighteen of the tournament there municipal code. To clarify and simplify design review and zoning regulations. So there's a couple of people who have been sleeping on this for a long time. So you've had a lot of input, but now it's time. So.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Jason. Good evening, Chair Jason, members of the planning commission and members of the public online. Um, yes, Tracy and I have been working on this and you all have been working on this for quite some time. And um, we're bringing to, bringing it close to a close here. And um, the first slide I want to show you is the background of where we have been. And this was initially um, communicated by the town council way back in November of two thousand nineteen. And uh, we began working on it. Um, we had two uh, planning commission workshops in two thousand twenty two. Um, giving over your overview and in general focus and um, goals for um, updating. Um, the design review regulations in our code. Um, in two thousand twenty three, we had three meetings, um, two, two workshops uh, with the commission as a whole. And then one special workshop just with the Christmas tree hill folks uh, to focus on their needs and and specific requirements for Christmas tree hill. Um, so that was two thousand twenty three and um. If in two thousand, and here we are in two thousand twenty four, uh, and just earlier this month, we had a special meeting similar to what we did with the folks at Christmas tree hill. But we spoke with the folks who were in floodplain and um, talked to specific um. Requirements that we're proposing and trying to encourage them and support them in raising their homes. But in doing it in a respectful manner that wouldn't um, impact their neighbors. And so that was earlier this month. And here we are. Back again with the whole group. Um, the purpose of this overall mission is to um. Is to amend the zoning ordinance uh, related designer view to amend, review and amend the policies, uh, clarify existing regulations. And make any changes to the structure of the code, make it easy for everyone to use, staff, commission, uh, council, and of course, most important, the public. Once we're done this evening, you you as a commission may wish to, your three possible options, uh, I would forward a recommendation to the council. To amend uh, the portions of title eighteen that we've described here. Uh, another option is to provide uh, directions to staff regarding amendments to the draft ordinance. And then a third option is to direct staff to return with additional information and analysis and continue this discussion um, for a future meeting before you. A basic definition of design review, which probably most of you know, is it's an entitlement process that one needs to go through. Prior to a building permit if one is building a project of a certain size. Um, generally a project that involves an exterior change. Um, and a physical change to the property or perhaps a use change that would um, combine with the use change. That when it could impact the neighbors. Um, it's a discretionary project, I'm sorry, a discretionary process. That controls the physical and visual character of town. And it's a, it's a process that's transparent. Neighbors are noticed within three hundred feet. And at times there's a public hearing um, for designer view project. And goal is forced to to um, be consistent and support the general plan and the zoning code. So that's our definition of design review. Focusing on the staff report before you um, through the um. The ten, I'm sorry, the seven public workshops we went through, um, we ended up with a lot of input and proposed changes. And we are addressing in one way or another, all twelve of these chapters within. Um, title eighteen. You've got title eighteen and then numerous chapters um, within it. And this is a list of all the different chapters. Specifically, we're focusing on what's in the staff report is um. We are, we looked at um, definitions, revising and adding definitions. We looked at thresholds for designer view. We looked at aligning designer view between different residential districts. Um, we looked at design review thresholds for non-residential projects, commercial and industrial. Again, we looked at Christmas tree hill. We um, we addressed some recent state legislation. And we looked at decks and fences and retaining walls, as you all probably remember. Um, and we also again, kind of organized again the where the designer view thresholds. And and the applicability is located. And again, we we addressed um, properties in the floodplain. So those are all the different big picture sections of the staff report. And with that, I will turn it over to Tracy to start on definitions.
Good evening, everyone. As Phil said, um, we looked at definitions. Um, this is just a simple bulleted list of of those that have changed. And I'll just. For you sort of generally, the draft ordinance and the language that we're talking about proposing, um, and that's before you for review tonight is exhibit A to attachment one. And the changes to definitions are section five of the ordinance. Um. We added bay window. We felt it would be helpful to add that. And it's allowed to project it to a setback a certain amount. So what's a bay window? Um, flag lot, we edited uh, to better reflect the way in which staff's practice has been drawing a front yard setback for a flag lot. Lot coverage was edited to uh, include reference that lot coverage is structures three feet. In greater than three feet type, could you meet the lot, lot coverage?
Net area of land was uh, edited. Net area of land. Was pulled out of the floor area sections of R one and R one A. That's what it applies to. Um, there's an existing definition of net area of land. Uh, that's used for purposes of calculating, calculating lot coverage. That means that area of land for calculating lot coverage. Is different than what's used to calculate floor area. Um, and that's creates an inconsistency. They both apply to R one and R one A lots. Why should they be different? They both talk about different things to exclude from a lot. So to reconcile that conflict. We've edited definition of net area of land to specifically say for R one and R one A lots, it's the same. And. We clarified projections into yards uh, to better align with the language we're using in the proposed ordinance. And. A retaining wall definition was added, or some ordinance regulates retaining walls differently than walls used in the fence. So we need help with the definition of retaining wall. Setback has a small edit. And water bodies and and waterways uh, refers to a. A figure, a diagram in the nineteen eighty nine general plan, and that's obviously since been updated. So. Uh, an update to water bodies and waterways was also included in the draft ordinance. Uh, several modifications are proposed to eighteen oh eight, our residential districts. Uh, there's some shown on on this slide. Um, and eighteen oh eight includes regulations for for fences and walls. Um, that duplicate those found in general provisions. So we pulled them out there and added them to general provisions. We'll, we'll cover that later. This is all section six of your ordinance, if you're going to follow. Um, we clarified some general language. Um, the threshold for design review in each of the individual. Our residential sections talks about when it's design review exempt. And we, as we discussed in previous meetings. Is more user friendly for the public to know when is it required for me, for my project. We just say additions of floor area, but we mean gross floor area. So clarifying that, using round numbers to simplify uh, the way that we. Determine threshold for design review. Uh, and I uh, sort of standardizing the language so that design review requirements are in a list form. To make it easier for that end user to to understand. Um, eighteen oh eight was also edited uh, to make some edits to table one. Table one is residential zoning district development standards. There are some typos in there. An additionally lot coverage, which was updated in two thousand seventeen, changing that lot coverage number here was was missed. Uh, so we're we're cleaning that up. Further, uh, changes in the eighteen oh eight and our residential reflect the alignment of the design review threshold in R one B and R one C zones. There are twenty four lots that are zoned R one B and R one C. They're shown on the screen in the light green and and darker green. The minimum lot sizes there are one acre and five acres respectively. The threshold for R one B is five hundred square feet. R one C, which actually is larger lots, is two hundred fifty square feet. These lots have substantial setback requirements, doubled and more that of R one lots. For these reasons, we feel that the threshold for both should be aligned to five hundred square feet. We discussed previously the very limited um, threshold for design review, commercial and non-residential zoning districts. It reads that any exterior change to structure our site needs design review. On the screen is proposed language. In two thousand seventeen, with the adoption of the MX one zoning district. Some additional flexibility in the language used for that threshold was added. Um, and it generally provided some. Uh, exemption or some ways that some some different types of repairs or modest modifications would not require a design review in in the MX one. Um, the way that our existing code reads, when it says any exterior change to structure our site needs design review in a commercial zone. That means that new paint, windows, awnings, some sort of repairs can trigger design review. So we're looking for a way to build upon what was adopted for MX one. But you can see at the bottom, we're proposing some parameters uh, on which staff would make. Use to make a decision on whether or not something needs uh, design review in a commercial zone. So it's still. Saying when is it required, but that also, what are the parameters? If it's not required, what are, what are we basing that decision off of? And that's the last. Three bullets here. Is it, how visible is it? Is it a change that's required by local, state or federal law? For example, ADA changes in apartment lot. Um, is it necessary for life safety purposes? Um, and then the extent of the modifications, is it one small change or many throughout throughout the site? For instance, landscaping could be significant or it could be, it could be small. And two, two workshops were held where we discussed design review threshold and findings for Christmas tree hill. One was with the planning commission. One, as Phil mentioned, was with folks that reside on Christmas tree hill. These regulations, existing regulations haven't been in place uh, for over thirty years. And so. The consensus was that those should be looked at and those should be discussed with people that that live there that would be. And so the consensus was that those should be looked at and those should be discussed with people that, that live there that would be affected by this change. And the consensus at, at that meeting, um, and with much of the commission was that, uh, we need to look at those. The threshold on Christmas Street Hill right now is not the same. It's much lower threshold. Much smaller project will trigger a design review. Um, and what we're proposing with the draft ordinance is that threshold on Christmas Street Hill would, would be the same. As R one and R one A, which is, you know, is two hundred and fifty square foot addition needs design review. Um, also there are, uh, eleven extra design review findings for projects on Christmas Street Hill. And that's in addition to the nine standard findings for regular design review. And some of those findings are repetitive of one another, could say the same thing. Some of them require our, our findings that are the same as what you're already making with regular design review. And so based upon feedback from the commission and from, um, the residents of the hill, those have been reduced in number. So we took the existing findings and the ones that match one another within Christmas Street Hill, we, we consolidated into one. Or if it's repetitive of a regular design review finding, um, then we, we struck it. And that's in Section Eighteen of, of the ordinance is all the Christmas Street Hill changes. Um, last thing I'm talking about, and I'll turn it back to Phil, is, um, some changes to comply with state. Law that we identified in the zoning ordinance, we're taking the opportunity now to make those changes and. The first one is, um, a result of Assembly Bill thirteen oh eight, and that was effective in January this year. And it, it basically says that projects that remodel, um, or expand a single family residence, even if the residence does not meet. Current parking requirements, um, that we can't require them to, to then meet parking requirements. Um, and so that necessitates several changes in, some changes in eighteen twenty in, uh, our parking chapter to comply with this. Um, this regulation. And then secondly, Senate Bill two thirty-four was effective, uh, in two thousand nineteen. And it prohibits, uh, local jurisdictions from requiring a use permit for a large family daycare. So the several changes are resulting from this particular piece of legislation. We're modifying the schedule of uses in residential to move large family daycare from a conditional use to a permitted use. Um, we're removing large family daycare standards. There's a set of standards in, uh, in our residential zone. That are applicable to large family daycare permits. And since we can't require a permit, those are, uh, shown and strike out. Um, and MX one also allows, uh, large family daycare as a conditional use. So again, that's been moved. Uh, off of the conditional use list in MX one. Uh, finally, parking requirements for large family daycare, we can't require a permit. Um, then we can't have parking requirements. For a large family daycare. And that's, those changes are, show up in Sections nineteen and twenty, um, of the, of the ordinance.
Good night. Thank you. Moving over to, um, modifications, we have two sections of the code. Deal with fences and decks and retaining walls and, and there's, there's quite a bit of overlap between those two sections. One is eighteen oh eight and the other one is, is eighteen twenty-four. And so we looked at those and, um, we, we clarified them and we carried them down. And so we put, everything, combined everything into eighteen twenty-four, oh five oh. Which deals with both residential properties and non-residential properties. Um, and so that's again, a simplification and again, hopefully make it much easier. For, um, for all users, uh, to access the code. And, and like we talked about, um, at, um, I think our, our last meeting. Last year, um, we went in quite detail on retaining walls and fences on top of retaining walls. And that's within, um, this new section of, um, eighteen twenty-four. So that is in, I think, Section Twenty-one of your new ordinance. Well, quite a bit of graphics that I know you all folks wanted, um, clarify. Um, what exactly is allowed if someone walks in the counter and says, you know, I want to flatten my yard. And I want to increase, increase the area of my yard and also want to have a protective fence, um, to make it safe. Um, the next slide, we, um, probably something that none of you knew, but we did. Um, the variance findings, um, for somehow, some reason were erroneously removed back in two thousand nine. Um, a, and a mistake that was made, um, but not, um, serious because variance findings are established by the state. And they existed in two thousand nine and they continued to exist in the state of California beyond two thousand nine. They just happened to not be in our code, but we knew where they were. We knew, we just continued using them. Now they were, they will be there. And so, um, so variance findings are reintroduced. And, um, all future planners will live happily ever after. Who knew? Who knew, right? And I imagine it will not change the, um, the number of variances that's, that come before all of us, I'm sure. Um, another part in, in all this discussion of, of design review. We've changed the designer review, um, chapter of code, of course. And we've consolidated all the design review thresholds. Again, for ease of, of reference, um, so instead of, as, um, Commissioner Rizzo asked in an email earlier today. Um, the way the code exists now is you say, okay, I'm in R one. You turn to R one and it tells you a number of things and it says, your designer view requirements are this business. And, um, but if you're, uh, so instead of having that. Stipulated in each different zoning district. We combined it into the design review section. And so now you go to Chapter eighteen thirty. And you say design, and it says designer view, and here are the designer view requirements for your particular property and your parcel. So again, for ease of reference, for ease of, if we ever need to revise these in the future. Um, we've, we've changed that chapter of the code. Um, it also specifies, um, which we said earlier too, when projects are required designer view. As opposed to when projects are exempt. Used to say you're exempt from designer view if you're this and this and this. Now we say. If you're doing these, these three or four things. You need, need to go through designer view. So it's just a, a cleaner and easier way we can to communicate the, the thresholds. Um, next we have the, um. We did go as, um, we spoke quite a bit. And again, had a special workshop dealing with folks living in the floodplain. How we can, um, modify the rules and allow them to, to raise their homes. Um, and not go through the designing process, thereby saving them, them time and money. But also do it in, in a sensible and sensitive way. Um, so if they meet certain height and size criteria. Um, if they do certain treatments to the walls, um, and the, the exposed foundation. And if they are sensitive and, um, modify the windows and doors. In a, in a sensitive way, then they do not go, need to go through designer view. And that was discussed, you know, quite a bit at our last meeting with you folks and in much more detail. With just the, um, floodplain residents, and I know a couple of you were on that, that call earlier this month. Um, just an example, as we pointed out, um, here's an example of a project that would not require designer view. Um, because they're meeting all the, um, all the new, they're below all the new thresholds. So, um, they're, they're not, they're not raising it beyond two feet, um, above base blood elevation. They're not, um, they're not, uh, the overall, the building will not be over twenty-two feet in height. And they're not adding more than two hundred and fifty square feet in, in living space. And so that's an example, one that would not require a design view. And this is an example of one that would. And these folks are required to go through designer view, um. If, if, if these new regulations are adopted, because they are lifting their building three feet over the base blood elevation. Um, which is greater than two. And so they, they would go through the designer view process. So those are two examples of that. And, um, actually I was going to jump to. That really concludes our report. Um, I just wanted to also mention. That I know there was some discussion in a couple of different meetings regarding both landscape requirements. And then also regarding, um, um, projects that are allowed to move forward if neighborhood notification is received. And, and if that neighborhood, um, it's not notification, neighborhood, um, approval is provided in writing. And, um, if, if that for smaller projects, mainly, um, fences. And, um, the placement of stair story windows. If you receive neighbor approval, uh, then you do not, do not need to go through designer view. And if we want to go into that discussion further, we have, um, additional information, we can talk about that. So with that, uh, our next steps are if the commission forwards a recommendation of approval. Then staff will bring the zoning ordinance and then to the town council. Or like I said earlier, that the commission may wish to request modifications and have staff bring this back to you folks.
Modifications have to come back?
No, you can, you can provide us with modifications and we can take clear, concise notes and make those changes and. And bring those, um, not back to you, but straight to the council.
Good, but just curious.
Saying could, right? Um, so, guys.
I'm, I'm gonna go last and take off the bar.
We'll go over to Mr. Kenny, go ahead.
The icebreaker, huh?
Yeah.
Uh, okay, um. Let's see, page four definition bay windows. Um, second sentence typically consists of central pane called, uh, called a thick sash implanted by two or smaller windows. Known as, uh, uh, casemate or double hung windows. I'm not sure why that's relevant. I mean, if someone wants a bay window with a single big piece of pane glass, is it not a bay window?
A thick sash planted by two or more smaller windows. Um, right, I don't think that is.
I have the same though.
Yeah.
Not just, just references windows and it could be any window, just like, you can, like, front window, side windows.
Mm-hmm, so it doesn't have to contain casements or upper bowls.
Right, it's, um, just a window.
Mm-hmm.
Does the bay window count as lot coverage?
No, not, not typically, uh.
Should it?
Most communities it does not.
We've seen some sizable bay windows, um, in the past, um. But it's typically not, uh, not coverage, the same way an awning is a, but a porch is.
Bay windows interior space. I don't understand why it might not be covered. Kind of as part of the floor area.
We have, where did we go over this? I know we talked about it, um.
Is that somebody? Yeah, like if the foundation hits the ground, it counts as, like a lot of coverage, but it always counts as.
It's a corner area.
It's a, it's a. Yeah, yeah, the original question was, does it count as lot coverage? Yeah, it, it would count. It would not count as lot coverage if it is, um. I was gonna, I was gonna say underneath the onion, but that's not necessarily true.
I mean, maybe it helps to know what's driving this definition is that a bay window can extend off the face of a building eighteen inches. Into a required setback.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and whether or not it's coverage or floor area or allowed to project it to the setback is kind of you look at what. How is it being constructed? Does it go, does it have a foundation and they're putting a tub in it? In which case, you know, that's definitely floor area and maybe that can't project it to a setback. Um, it's part of the foundation of the home, of the home. Um, I think what the, what we're trying to do is. Ride some parameters around what is, what. What it is allowed to project to the, into the setback.
But what, what's the purpose of defining lot coverage? If now you can't, this is not really a no longer usable lot area.
But I, I think back to your question, Commissioner, if, if we take out setbacks and just say, you know, this house is way within the setbacks and it's not an issue. Someone comes in and they want to build a bay window that's, that extends three feet out, you know, a huge, a huge bay window, but setbacks aren't an issue. I would say that would be counted as lot coverage, because now instead of a, instead of a building that's a rectangle. You've got a, you've got a, that's your lot coverage. Now you've got a building with, you know, a three foot bay window sticking out. And you are covering more of the lot. Um, so in, in that situation, I think, and that bay window would count towards lot coverage.
Well, I, I don't quite see the difference, but, uh, it, do, is that your, our, our planning staff interpretation or is that in the code? That that would count as lot coverage?
I'm trying to, I, I would say a, you know, um.
Uh, lot, lot coverage has, how you calculate lot coverage is included in our code. And it says that it's the footprint of all structures on site greater than three feet in height. Except that required ease extending out from, no more than three feet from the face of the building are not counted as coverage. And that the, the measurement of height of a deck does not include the railing for purposes of calculating lot coverage. That's what it says basically. Um, so we use that in order to figure out what, are they measuring lot coverage correctly?
I, I, I think. We're, we're making these zoning changes, right?
Mm-hmm.
And I think the question I'm asking is, should it?
I think, um.
Covering up a portion of the lot. That's not usable for any other purpose.
I mean, I don't.
Well, it all depends if it's touching the ground, because it, it, this bay window could be on the second floor.
Right?
Right.
Yeah, so I think in that case it wouldn't be covered.
Agreed.
Lot coverage, but would definitely be floor in a ratio.
But then in that case, code regulates the protection as well.
Right, yeah.
That's why I say in San Francisco, if you're above, it's so many feet above ground level. Um, then it does not count and it's allowed. But if you drop it down, then it becomes. Floor area lot coverage. If it, if it's three feet off the ground, you can't use that ground for anything else. But if you're like fourteen feet up, it's not part of lot coverage.
But what I'm hearing is even if it's three feet above the ground, we don't count.
I don't know that.
No, we, I'll, I'll back up a little bit. The, the bay window definition came about. Because we have no definition of bay window in the current code. So we said, we need a definition. And, and so we, we found this and, um. I think that like we have said, um, I think a bay window would count as lot coverage. If it is, like I said before, like Tracy said, is an extension, you're, you're making the, the walls of the building larger. You're extending out those walls and those, that, that new wall is covering the lot. So, um, it would count towards lot coverage.
And that's in the ordinance?
We don't specifically say a bay window counts as lot coverage, but we do define what lot coverage is. And like Tracy said, it's the, um. The exact wording that would apply would be.
This, yeah, it refers to ease. It says ease projecting three feet or less shall not be counted, or actually.
Right.
Handrails.
But it says, you know, lot coverage shall be measured by dividing the total square feet of ground area covered. By all open or enclosed structures greater than three feet in height. By the net area of the land.
So if the bay window is greater than above the ground by three feet, it's counted. And if it's below the ground by three feet, it's two and a half feet above the ground, it's not counted.
Uh, correct, correct.
Does that make any sense?
Yeah, you're, you're probably never, you're never going to have a, a, a bay window that's, that's less than three feet in height. Just like you're probably, you're never going to have, uh, when you're adding a bedroom. You're going to be adding a bedroom and that bedroom is going to be greater than three feet. And so that's going to count towards lot coverage.
I guess the question is if the, if the proponent is just trying to add square footage that's over and above. What's allowed by lot coverage by adding a bay window? And it's only two and a half feet off the ground, but they're adding lot coverage.
If they're adding a bay window that's only two and a half feet above the ground. It's not going to count as lot coverage, but it's quite unusual that they would do that. Just like if they're gonna.
I think you're talking about two different things. Um, we're talking about the bay window at top, top and, and Phil's saying that if it's only eighteen inches high or. What's, what's the height?
Three, above three feet.
Yeah, three, if it's a thirty inch high bay window, it's not even usable. So anything above that thirty inches, even if it was elevated, he's saying is covered by lot coverage. Is that my interpretation, what you just said?
Yes.
Yes.
But, um, when we're talking about bay windows, um, there is no finite. Amount of width for the bay window. And I kind of went over this with Martha. A job one time. It's like, what is a bay window? And in San Francisco, it's percentage of the sod. And we don't have, I mean, you could literally put a window on either side of the building. And on the front and call it bay window and say it is an extension.
I had the same comment.
So we might want to add just something like, you know, I, I don't know, maybe. There's, uh, some sort of standard, everyone in San Francisco, that's the way it was. They, they only allowed a certain percentage of the. Cause everybody was putting bay windows in to increase their square footage. because everybody was putting bay windows in to increase their square footage and that came about as a a way to curb someone's bulk of the bay windows.
Real.
To increase your.
And that's weird.
By adding a bay window.
But yeah, it could be the width of a building that's, you know, by definition.
Well, it comes back later in the section where we define how deep a bay window could be, we could add the percentage there.
Correct.
Or how many bay windows could be included on one facade.
Well, that would be counted as a percent, so at least you have fifty foot, you go thirty percent of it and then you can figure it out. Anyway.
And what you're all saying is that there needs to be um numbers attached to this eighteen point oh four point oh six five regarding the width and depth and the definition of coverage.
Actually, I think it comes later, Peter, because later on, there's a definition of how deep a bay window could be.
Well, that's only in the exemptions. Doesn't necessarily. That's just the, the exemption into the, into the setback. Eighteen inches, but not necessarily how deep it can.
Yeah, like I used my, my earlier example, if you have a building that setbacks aren't an issue, you can have an eighteen inch bay window or you can have an eighteen foot bay window. But the eighteen inches.
It doesn't count as part of your.
Is related, is related to setbacks.
Could you have an eighteen foot?
I'm just using a crazy example.
Yes, by de, by definition, let's just say my, my, my room is eighteen feet wide and it projects into the front yard setback eighteen inches and I have a window on the sides in the front, by definition, it would be a bay window. Unless we define a width or a percentage. I mean. Okay, I'm.
I have only one comment to add about the bay windows. Just to, sorry, just to finish it up, because we had it marked up as well. Um, because like, just to add the language that they cannot be also an egress window because then it will become um I, I think rooted definition like altogether, like if people will use it to add square footage and also as an egress as well.
You're concerned that.
That a bay window cannot be an egress window?
That people could say that it can be an egress window as well.
Oh, to get around the lot?
Yes.
Not sure.
It could be, why, why couldn't it be or why do you think?
Well, if they, I mean, if the window is projecting, right, and then it is an egress window already, like then they are definitely adding square footage to the.
I see, so you're saying they can't be mutually exposed if you wanted one or the other, right? So if it's, if it's a space that has an egress, it should count towards square footage, that's what you're saying, yeah.
Well, if it's egress, oh, you're talking about like emergency egress.
Yeah.
Like I'm a second story, I'm kind of getting into building codes.
Yeah, that's why I'm building codes.
Okay. Uh, do we have a definition for reverse corner lot and key lot?
Yes.
On my list, see, check it out.
It's, it's not, it's not proposed to change, but yes, we have definition.
I didn't have a chance.
But. I was looking for the graphic, but I didn't see one, so.
Well, the, the other two lots that I, I just, there was a graphic for um a flag lot and I thought there was another graphic for one of the other lots that talk about how we're gonna define the different property lines, which we had a few of those come up and it would be great to just briefly go over how that language reads out.
There's a, a definition of what those types of lots are, a double frontage lot, a through lot, a reverse corner lot, a corner lot, a flag lot, et cetera.
Yeah.
In definitions existing, it's not in your ordinance because we're not changing it. And then how to handle the reverse corner lot is in uh general provisions for residential, so not proposed to change.
But it's, well, we have some change in our language in the flag lot.
Flag lot, yes. Correct.
And interior lot line most parallel to the nearest street. I don't know what that means.
Um.
That's what I was trying to think.
Well. The flag lot is parallel in that the interior line behind the added front lot. Right?
The whiteboard?
There's the diary. So. On a flag lot.
They're not the right.
I'm figuring, yeah, so um
if the street is here and you have a flag lot that comes down like this, so this is one project, that's the other, so yeah, that definition says you gotta add that and this.
Sorry, I'm clearly. I have one question.
Sorry. So is this they get setback, that gets to the front yard setback?
Yes.
Right?
That was very, my, my head's shot.
Right.
Correct. Okay.
And it says, uh, it says eighteen on page five, it says there's the setbacks shall be the lot line nearest the street and the interior lot line most parallel.
Right, so there are two, in, in a, in a flag lot, Tracy's bringing it up, of course. Um, I won't, I won't speak until I can point to it, because it's a little complicated. Sometimes, it's, it's hard to say in words, but easy to say in pictures. Okay, so can you read that one more time, Mr. Rhythm? What, what you read before?
I think Peter just explained it, I just, so a flag lot, um. Uh, sorry, I'll read it for you.
No, I'm sorry, on the flag lot, the lot, the line used for measuring the front yard setback shall be the lot line nearest the street with there and the interior lot line most parallel to and there's the street, so that one.
So the, so this flag lot has two setback areas.
Okay.
One setback area is X feet from here and the other setback area is X feet from here.
And they'll be treated as a front yard setback?
Yes. In most cases, you know, this is a driveway and so this is moot.
Yeah.
So if you didn't use, if you didn't use this guy, then, then you could put your house right on this line, right close to this line, then this person's impacted. That's the reason for, so the, the front setback line is measured from base of the flag pole and the bottom of the flag.
And then you have a rear, then your rear yard setback's twenty feet and you have fifteen, so you have twenty-five feet unusable.
It's a very unusual lot and this, this isn't changing the way we've interpreted this, it's just trying to say it better. So that future planners, if Phil's gone and no one remembers how to measure a flag lot, we have a little bit better instruction on how to do that. And it is a very unusual lot as, as you may recollect anytime you see it, it's, it's not that common.
Don't buy a black out.
Eat by dirty mole home.
Okay, I have two more, two more things.
Uh-huh.
Uh, as we're, we're, we're talking about definitions, um we had a discussion about the definition of corner lots and I can't remember the details of it, but where uh the current definition would allow the front yard to actually be uh be the functional side yard. Uh, and I, I can't remember now the details of it, but you know, where every house on the street faces, front yard faces the street and then the corner lot, now that's a side yard. And I can't remember. We talked about trying to refine that definition, but I can't remember the details of it.
Sure thing.
Find an application.
This, this came up with an application where.
It's coming back.
And it's coming back right now, um, where the lot was a reverse corner lot, its rear property line abuts the sideline of another lot. So structures on the reverse corner lot need to be twenty-five feet away from that rear property line.
Mm-hmm.
One would think, but the person on the other side need only be five feet. And so the way that this code section number oh one on the screen, what the, is trying to say is that if you have a reverse corner lot, if you match that key lots behind you, if you match their front yard, then your side yards may be the same at, at five or six feet. So they would increase their street side to match the front of the lot behind them, thereby allowing the, the rear yard to match that, their side yard. It's very hard to say in words.
Uh-huh, so you think this address, again, I can't remember the details of it, you think this addresses the question of, of the corner lot and what's the definition of front yard?
Uh, it's not um affects the, where the front yard is on a reverse corner lot. Um, and that, well, it goes into change this section shown on the screen or the definition of reverse corner or corner lot.
The only, the only definition we're changing is this flag lot. And.
Now, I'm a bit of a lost, to provide any more definition of what the issue was, so this. Pass.
The issue, I think, that you're remembering was the lateness of the discovery of that code section, so it completely changed the required setbacks for the lot that was coming before you for a preliminary review. Um, and it, it really eliminated the need for their rear setback variance, if they could, if they could increase their street side to match the neighboring lot, then they didn't need the rear yard setback variance and so that, it was the lateness of the discovery of this code section that
Okay.
caused us to discuss it such a great deal.
My light bulb went off.
Now I remember. Uh, the only thing. In, in, and this has come up before, uh, I really don't support um the idea that a neighbor uh could sign a letter to let the owner um um provide a essentially a variance to the code and, and the rationale is, I think it encumbered the property, owners come and go and now this new owner uh has a property next to him that, that would not have been permitted uh in another, you know, if, if they were there, if they were the owner at the time. And it perhaps is unfair uh to other people who uh would like that exemption, but can't get their neighbor to agree. Uh, also, uh, we don't know if there was some pre quote quo between the two neighbors to get that agreement that the new owner now does not benefit from that pre quote quo. Uh, and um, you know, I also think that, uh, you know, just an inequity that, you know, one neighbor would approve it and for this poor property owner next door, he can't get his, he or she can't get his neighbor to approve it and what's the equity in that? So I, and I know it appears other places in our ordinance, but I'm opposed to that in general.
I agree with you, Daniel. Yeah. I think that's an unfair application of, oh, my neighbor agreed to it, then it's okay, I don't think that's right.
Um, I mean, we, we did look at kind of numbered, are, are you talking about the fence?
Uh, I'm, I'm talking about the window at the moment.
Window, okay.
Yes, it, it just kind of, the, the two applications of the, the two options for residents to get um something more on their project by just getting uh their neighborhood, their neighbor to say yes. And by getting their neighbor to say yes, they're avoiding going through designer. One situation is if the neighbor wants a, a fence that's taller than six feet, but not taller than eight. So if I want to, if I want to build a seven foot fence, my two options are to go to my neighbor and say, are you okay with this? Neighbor says yes, I'll take the seven foot fence. They're both probably gonna be impacted by that seven foot fence, you know, they'll be impacted in different ways. So the neighbor says yes to that and then I can go ahead and build my seven foot fence with that designer view. If the neighbor says no to it, then my choices are, okay, I don't want to hassle my neighbor, I don't want to make any problems, I'm just gonna build it six feet.
I, I understand that.
Option number two is I could say, my neighbor say no, but I still want my seven foot fence, I'm going through designer view. And so then I go through the time and the, and the process, so that's, that's one example. And the, the only other one is if you want a clear story window in your ADU as opposed to no window at all, then you.
If you want a non, if you want a non-clear story window on the side elevation of your ADU, that's within fifteen feet of the property line, you can get design review or you can get permission from that neighbor that's on that adjoining property line, that's the other instance where we're using that.
Didn't it also apply where you're raising the house in the flood, in the flood plain?
Yes, and so that.
So that's the third situation.
Um, that's the proposed language and, and where it's coming from and just looking back at, at fences, you know, since, since two thousand and ten, we've had a couple of applications for design review for a fence greater than six and up to eight. Um, and that was because the neighbors couldn't agree. Um, but certainly we have many instances of fences greater than six up to eight and since you don't, you know, we don't track that, how many per, permissions have been provided to the town, um, but in, in looking at the number of fences out there that are over six and up to eight and knowing that we've only done two designer views, I think that the neighbor permission is, um, it may, may be working for people and then the designer view is actually was probably not working, because then you have two neighbors, you already know it's gonna go poorly because the person's applying for designer view because their neighbor and them are fighting about the fence height, so um you know, that's kind of where, where we came from in, in dealing with these, the neighbor permission i- issue and, and I hear, hear what you're all saying, I just wanted to tell you what, uh, about past applications.
I'll, I'll just comment as well that, I mean, I, it's a valid concern. Um, there are a lot of jurisdictions that use this type of exercise to really empower property owners to work with their neighbors and it is a more passive environment than our, our noticing and our official process. So neighbors will get notified one way or the other, so it's really empowering the property owner to have those conversations personally and to take care of issues, so it creates less of a burden on the town as well to process this many comments, so it's providing an out if the property owner has the possibility of working it out with the neighbors. Um, if not, there is a formal process that they can go through. So and just looking at um, you know, what the, kind of the data that Tracy was talking about, it, it would, by removing that opportunity, it would create um a lot more permit activity um for us as a department as well.
Can you point up on that?
Um. I don't know if we're ready to do that tonight, but maybe we have that or not.
Point up, I'm sorry.
Uh, the amount of, of permits that end up coming to us versus, well, that end up working through their neighbors, that process and avoiding designer view.
Right, so, right, that question is how many, how many eight foot fences are there out there?
How many letters have we gotten from the adjacent owner approving either a fence or a clear story window in a given year?
But, well, I don't have that information, that's on my head.
Yeah, you can probably find it.
But yeah, that's something we could track. But um yeah, just trying to get to your concern about coercion or things of that sort.
There's an inequity to it, it's coercion, there's a lot of things.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, certainly a lot of fence permits are a result of neighbor issues and people want fences because of their neighbors sometimes, so it, it's um of all land use, I feel like fences are the, sometimes the most controversial thing for some reason, but um, you know, in most situations, I believe the neighbors are really able to work through those things.
Yeah.
So it may.
In most situations also fences are being built by both parties because they're, it, it's on property line and they both realize, hey, we'll both benefit, so they're both, in a lot of cases, they're both paying the bill. So, you know, if they both decide, hey, we both want to pay, we both want an eight foot fence because of the way our lots are situated, because we both have big dogs or whatever it is, and so they're, they're coming at this as a, you know, as, as two neighbors in agreement. And as Tracy said, that's the majority of, I think, how fences between six and eight get built.
And what we could do is you work through these issues, is if there's something where um you obviously feel something needs to change, we can maybe put that aside and then come back to it. Um, if it requires more direction, um, and if you all are thinking about really having to um, make some consensus on what you'd like to do. Um, some of, we can just start making a list as we go through your questions if you'd like and then come back to it.
Have you um seen what other communities do for this at all, um, like? I'm sure it's the same issues in every community, but what else do they do? Or do they not? Do they just say, you guys gotta go fight it out before the entities that we have? Um, or do they have? What you're describing is we're down to two considerations, as Phil has said, it's either one way or the other. You either come to an agreement or you go before you guys and then it ends up in the designer view. Right, so there really aren't that many options for the process. Um, so and it, it is a burden on everybody to have to. Um, so, and it, it is a burden on everybody to have to decide sometimes these aggravating issues for neighbors and I somehow mark that valid, they're just neighbor issues. So where does the distinction lie? So that's just neighbors fighting it out or this is a bona fide problem that needs adjudication, needs some kind of parameter, some kind of code to address it. How do you impart that code onto this, these different levels of disagreement or contention?
Yeah, I think, I think I would characterize it as not necessarily a bona fide problem, but a bona fide need. There is a significant need out there for fences between six and eight. And a lot of people have built them and a large and majority of them, we think, have been built by cooperatives. They've both, they've cooperated and they've built their, their eight foot fence. Um, I don't know if we've had a single um, or maybe we had, maybe we had one come to the planning commission for the fence.
Well, the other side of it is that you guys probably haven't seen, we haven't been alive long enough for somebody to come back and say, how did that get built? Why is that there, right? And nobody's come back and said, that shouldn't have been approved. I don't want it there. Um, that's what Dan's talking about is that it doesn't fit in parameters, yeah. But, you know, it's just, everybody accepts what happens between property owners eventually. And you look and say, oh, previous owner did that, okay. I'll live with it, I don't like it. I'll talk to my neighbor, see if you can cut it down something, you know? So there is this thing that has to happen, there has to be some dialogue at some point to resolve those kinds of issues rather than just saying, it, it is this or any, it's got to fall on these parameters. And that's hard on everybody to say it is or it isn't. And, and where do you let it happen and, and organically proceed, right? That's, it's
I had more of a concern about the windows because once you put a window in, it's a permanent, part of a permanent structure, more expensive to change a window usually than a piece of fence. Um, and, um, and it is a part of a permanent structure when you sell your property and someone else, you know, buys it, they're buying that agreement that you've gotten into. And, um, in my experience, you know, this quid pro quo is also, people lie. In my neighborhood, it's pretty common.
Oh, it feels to me this interpretation of the, I don't know, drawings, like what neighbors are using to uh, communicate their desire to do something with their neighbor, right? How would they communicate? Did they describe it what they're trying to build and then eventually building and then neighbor is saying, oh, that's not what I agree to. What is, where do they go from there? So I'm more concerned about the kind of the aftermath of something that was misunderstood rather than, yes, absolutely, neighbors have to decide amongst themselves on the force of action of certain structures that have, you know, been modified, um, in their property lines. But, um, who's mitigating them in a way? And, uh, I'm also streamlining of the process, I think all of us are. Like, we don't want to be, you know, reviewing defenses or anything like that here. But the, um, the idea is that, you know, like if there is a disagreement, how, how is it going to be addressed?
Well, we've never, we've never had when a neighbor submitted, you know, a, a neighbor submitted a piece of paper that says, you know, my neighbor signed here and we both agreed to an eight foot fence. We've never had a situation where they came back two months later and says, my neighbor didn't build what I signed that he said he was going to build. We've never had, we've never had that situation come up either here or in the, where I used to work in Petaluma, you needed to get your neighbor's signature to build a fence of any size on a property line. Because the property line is only this thick. And so if I'm building a fence on my property line, I'm trespassing under my neighbors. And so if you couldn't get your signature of your neighbor, you build it a foot in for your lot. You didn't build it on the property line. So that's the way Petaluma does it. Um, most people got their signature from their neighbor and they built the, again, they built the fence together 99% of the time.
So the system's working for you guys?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So, I don't know where that puts us on that table, it's still later on in the discussion, but, um, anything else you want to bring to the, all right?
Thank you.
All right, so to my right. Mr. For sure.
I'm easy, I don't have any questions. And I think the, I think many things are streamlined and this is great. I think many modifications are really good and it's been amazing work. But, um, I do have questions in regards to the kind of standard development of the lots and other things. Since people are now widely, uh, building ADUs, I feel like that scratches a lot of things that have been implemented here almost in a way. And I wonder if there is a way to implement, um, kind of some paragraphs or language that would be inclusive of how ADUs are treated within these lots. Um, that would clarify to people or what, I mean, yes, of course, they're going to go and build it, right? They, they have the approval to do that. But in, to have the municipal code to be inclusive of that language, at least so that it's with awareness that people are doing it. Um, and, um, you know, like I, I have other comments too, but like I think that's kind of like the main one for this one.
Did you have, so of the categories that were changing the code, you're broadly speaking, definitions, design refresh old, raising in the flood plain?
So specifically to the standards for the development of all lots, um, in section 11.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I believe there, there are different areas, like in section 10, you're also mentioning it, and then where are you talking about the, um, the floor area ratio for lots and setbacks? I feel like they all could have maybe like a paragraph of exception of, I don't know, if you use an ADU like this would be your setback, I don't know what for.
We do have, we do have that, um, special setback requirements and other development standards for ADUs. Um, that it does, chapter 1831. Um, we, we will be looking at that, and we're planning to look at that, um, this year and bring that to you. But all of those development standards that are specific, um, to ADUs, whether it's required by state law or, um, as developed by the, by the town, by the commission of town council, are contained as a separate chapter. Um, so any inland constructing in ADU would actually not refer to the residential district. Um, specifically, they would refer to the ADU chapter first.
So maybe there's like a reference paragraph, just to put a clarification since this is you guys trying to clarify for people and what their lives are, just to kind of having those references across without, would be helpful.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, so direct people to the ADU chapter somewhere within this chapter.
Yeah, I, I guess, yes. Just so that, you know, everything is kind of pointed to each other.
That might be maybe something we add with the ADU ordinance, sort of general provisions for residential. And, and similar to how we're saying in general provisions for residential, for designer view, go to 1830, for accessory dwelling unit, go to 1831. So we could have a, if it, if it doesn't show up with this change, we could put it in with the ADU ordinance changes. Maybe some other cross referencing that needs to change, um, at that time too.
Yeah, but I think one of the concerns with incorporating the ADU legislation into other chapters is ADU legislation is constantly changing. So we may be put in a position where we need to amend other chapters of state legislation for ADU legislation.
But if you put the reference to the chapter, it's not, the chapter will not change.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, excellent. And then, um, just a simple question. Um, so this one is just amending the language again, it's not necessarily amending the existing or improving the existing provisions, correct? So if we were to want to add improvements to, um, decode and zoning, um, area stuff or, you know, environmental impacts specifically, that is aligning the climate action plan. This would not be the place to do that, right? Um, or will, will we have a chance to improve it since you're already changing so many of the things here?
Yeah, I, I think we've talked about this a little bit. And I think an appropriate place to make significant change in this section regarding environmental or green building, sustainable building would be in crafting a new, um, finding. A designer view finding that says, um, this project significantly reduces greenhouse gases by X, Y, and Z. And we are not touching the findings in this process.
Got you, okay. And I, I will say, there are areas of code that don't come before you as a commission that may get to the heart of what you're looking at. Um, one is, I know we're working on another layer of reach codes. Um, and our baby or climate action, um, person is working on that actively right now. And I know it's going to be going through climate action committee and then going to council. So, um, I can give you a report out on that as that's moving forward. And in addition, I believe it's next year, we will be in a new code cycle for building code, which again won't be coming through you, but there will likely be additional things that we will have to require related to, um, what you're speaking about. So we can make sure to give an update to you all as that's moving through the process as well. Um, so I think a lot of those components just don't touch the zoning code specifically, but are being, you know, in other parts of the code.
Yeah, I feel like we, we would love to use the opportunity to, I mean, not to change obviously, but to improve certain language within our requirements towards these structures. Um, you know, that's, I, I think like everyone as we were reading through that, right? Like, it's a little bit, not dated, but you know, like it, it's still using the same standards that's sometimes not necessarily aligning with a greater vision of what we're there specifically. So it would be nice to have an opportunity to speak up and align, um, those areas.
Yeah, it might be good also, um, through the climate action work to prior, you know, look at the prioritization of the climate action plan and when what's moving through that. So, and, and that climate action plan may be updated as well. And that's where you can prioritize, uh, zoning code changes that may, um, reduce greenhouse gas emissions or, or, you know, get at another effort in that way.
All right, good. Ms. Barbara.
Okay. Um, just one, uh, small, not, not before I get to the big thing. Um, on page, on the second Okay. And this is just an example of some language problems that I have. Not necessarily any specific place, but when you say something on page two, for instance, in one of the dots, in one of the bullet points, it says revising thresholds for designer view for commercial and non-residential to allow for, allow minor modifications. And then, and, and that kind of term, minor modification, major modification, it's just very amorphous. What's minor for, for you is not minor for me. And I think, I don't know exactly if every time we read something like that, we need to define it a little more or leave it out completely and just say modification and leave it to someone's higher, higher powers judgment. But, um, minor modifications, you know, someone will come here and say it's a minor modification, it's not minor to me. I live next door and you're looking in my window. Or some, I'm, it's, it's just, it's difficult.
I think, I think you agree with that. And, and we tried to, if you go to, on, on ordinance, almost at the end of the staff, of the whole staff warrant attachment is page 37 of the ordinance at the bottom. Um, you put for some code language there that, that's, um, says that in commercial and non-residential zoning districts, you need designer view for any exterior modification of structure or site that includes one or more of the following, additions of new floor area or new structures, new or significant replacement or modification of exterior elements, structures, site features, or landscaping as determined by this community development director. And of course, that begs a question like, what's significant? Just like you're saying, what's minor, what's, what's not? And so the last paragraph there, top of 38, is trying to do that. Um, and you can give us some feedback if it's not doing that at all. But we're trying to say that a minor modification is trying to allow for paint, awnings, ADA improvements, um, the small stuff. And that, that last paragraph is trying to set forth what the community development director is considering.
And see, I put a question mark next to that too. Because I have, um, it's a problem. What, I, I mean, I'm on the planning commission, so I think something is, is really important. But it's already been decided by the community development, um, director and they, she, he, that person has made a decision for five other people. It, it, that might have been significant, maybe it's not significant, but it's just so subject, um, to somebody, to one person's opinion who's not necessarily even living in the community.
Well, one, uh-huh, and, and one example of if, if staff makes a call and calls something minor, um, if we're in a designer view process, the staff says, okay, we're not going to bring this to the planning commission, we're just going to, we're going to notify our neighbors. So we send it out as minor, we, we send out a notice everybody within 300 feet. And if there are significant objections from the neighbors, significant concerns, then staff can decide, okay, this is no longer minor. We may think it's, we may still all think it's minor, but the community doesn't, and so we're bringing it to you. So that's an example of our definition of minor is overridden, more or less, by the community.
So if it's one neighbor who says, this isn't minor, what happened?
Well, the, the residential is still by the numbers. This, um, decision-making process applies to non-residential and commercial changes. So we've been, the existing code says, any exterior change to structure or site needs designer view. So we're faced with folks who want to paint their building needing designer view. Um, and, and so this particular paragraph in the decision-making process applies just to non-residential and commercial structures that, that would, we would have the community development director deciding, does this warrant designer view or not? Not necessarily, does it go to the commission or does it, is it processed by staff? But just, is this a change that we want to review with the planning entitlement? And those, that's, we're, maybe we're not doing a good enough job articulating it in, in what those possible changes might be. Um, but I, I bullet pointed a few of what, what those are.
And I guess part of my problem with that was, I, I didn't realize it was not uh, significant to residential.
Residential is still, yeah, still by the numbers and that starts on page 36. Um, and it's got a bunch of, uh, thresholds for design review, period, and then
And, and just to throw in a wrinkle to this. I think that scope of designing could zero pop.
What's that?
We, we really do need to go through and tighten that up in my opinion.
Where, where is it?
Underneath 18.30.021.
Scope of designer view.
Scope of designer view. Do we, uh, I, I know we've talked about that for a long time.
Can you elaborate on what you need?
Excuse me?
Can you elaborate on what you need?
Okay. Okay, in number one, for how long have we talked about since I've been on the commission? View considerations, privacy, topography. View considerations, privacy, topography, and other constraints on development imposed by particular site conditions. That's just like way out there. But have we ever even talked about view considerations? What's a view? And then people have talked about a major view, minor view. If you're standing up, what's the view? If you're sitting down, what's the view?
So let me, I'll just interject here. What you're saying in this section is where it goes for designer review, it does not further define those elements that Margaret's asking about. But you know, when you are talking about view ordinances or view, which we don't have, but view elements, that's a separate section of code, is it not? More than possible.
User.
I was just saying, just to be clear, this eight, eighteen thirty oh two oh is, isn't new. There's one change to it that just clarifies that the district regulations don't set forth designer review parameters. Now they're in this section. So we haven't really studied this to see if it lines up with findings or not. Um, and we are going to tackle findings, maybe not bill, we have, but findings at some point. And we want to give you the tools that you need to make these decisions. And that really lies in the findings. And are there findings that are problematic? Bring your, any more emphasis or more defining of what is a view? And some jurisdictions are, are doing that. And it's very, it's very challenging. We may have to get some outside help to, to do that, but.
I, I guess what I'm just saying is, you know, I understand we, we need to get through this and that's a good idea. I, I'm just saying, let's not forget about that.
Yes.
True.
Okay. And then my real question is, I, I, I guess I need someone to explain to me the, the part about daycare. And the large family daycare and permit and conditional permit. What's the significance of, of that change?
Um, well.
How does it change what we have in place now?
Um, it, it means that if somebody wants to open a large family daycare, there's a small, which I think is less than eight, eight or six. And then there's large, which is up to fourteen. Previously, they needed to get a use permit and meet certain requirements, including buffering, meaning they couldn't have um, two within five hundred feet of each other. And there were, um, and, and that, that was processed. Um, we also could have them get a business license. And now the state has found that there's value in having children in a home instead of an institutionalized care and that they want to encourage and uh, promote or reduce barriers to people opening not only the small-sized family daycares, but the large. And so um, that's what this bill back in two thousand nineteen did is said that cities and towns can't require a use permit for large family daycare. Um, so we haven't been doing that. And that means that we should take that out of our code. It's not consistent with state law. State law says we can't require it. Says we can't require a business license. Um, and there are organizations that are educating some of our daycare providers and they've, they've come in and been paying for a business license all the way back to two thousand nineteen and finance departments had to refund that money. Um, and, and we want to update our ordinance to be consistent with that, which basically means that a large family daycare is permitted use just like the small, um, and that we can't require a permit for it.
So what's the difference between a large and a small? Is, is it?
Small is up to eight, large is, uh, up to fourteen, thirteen or fourteen.
And I, and I'm assuming there are separate requirements that aren't here for large daycare, small daycare.
There, there were, and those, those that are um, section nine.
So they don't need a business permit?
They don't need a business license.
They're licensed by the state. And so the state has a, a whole process for them with final standards.
Yep. And inspections and, um, page eight of the ordinance strikes all of the, um, requirements for large family daycare. Did that answer your question?
Yes.
I think that for now. Oh yeah, this is like on page six. And just a question.
This is captain Jordan.
Of the this, what's an example of a ground-mounted mechanical device that should be treated the same as an accessory structure?
An AC unit, a heat pump, a generator. Generators are exempt from our noise ordinance, so, um, we can't control the noise that they make if they're used for emergency purposes, not for other purposes like your auto shell. Um, but it has come up for us where people are proposing these air conditioners and heat pumps in various locations. And we wanna, we've always treated them like accessory structures and we want to make sure that's in our, in our code.
And accessory structure is different than an ABU.
Correct. And accessory structure, we like those. They can, the shed, yeah. They can be in your rear yard. It can't be taller than ten feet in height. It can't be closer to five, than five feet to a side or rear property line. It can't be in the front yard. So same thing with these mechanical devices. We actually, we define mechanical devices in the noise ordinance. So, um, and that includes air conditioners.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Rizzo.
I'll try to. So, um, I'm just trying to just look at some of these things to make sure that they all align. And a few things came up. Um, one, um, first of all, Amy, do you feel like you have enough information to make decisions on the minor? Like, do you need more findings or anything to make those, those calls that it needs to go to design review? Cause we talked about that or you're feeling uncomfortable with the language?
Uh, if I wasn't comfortable with you, no. But I will say, um, it is also a term of art to say that it's done administratively. So it's usually the team or individual planner that's, um, making that call. But we're very consistent about how we apply, uh, minor and, and basically all parts of the code, just to make sure that we're not, um, creating issues and doing something differently for one property and not another. So.
Second one is I found that, uh, in one of the exception, exceptions, um, that could go in the side yard setback where we have chimneys and landings and stairs, as long as there's three feet, there's porches in there. And I don't know why porches should be a part of the exception into the setback if it's not some sort of accessory thing. Cause then people are just gonna be able to make their porches wider than the house and encroach into the side yard setbacks further than the decks that we're saying can only be five feet. So I was just wondering if we should remove porches from, um, I'm on page thirty one. Um, number one.
From the, just the side yard or from front?
No, from the side yard. I, I think that that, that was, that was made there so people can put egress stairs and have chimneys, but the porches, like it already says landings and staircases.
Right.
So I didn't know why porches would be, have an exemption to encroach further than what we're allowing decks. So I was wondering if we should remove that porches from that.
Okay.
Yeah. You know, some commissioners feeling differently about it, seem kind of inconsistent.
Oh, we, we have it, uh, allowed it. It's in our existing allowed encroachments into side yard areas. And so.
But didn't we just go through this exercise of saying that anything that's over three feet or whatever can't go into the side yard setback more than five feet. And so this would allow porches to go two feet further. I just don't know why we would allow porches to go further than decks or what, what the difference is.
The L of the porch.
Right. I think we covered with.
I, Peter, I don't know.
I mean, I think a porch is something that's covered.
Yeah.
Right. But also, yeah, I mean, it's a good point because we do say trellises. So I, if you get rid of the word porches, but you keep trellises and landings, I can build myself a landing in a trellis.
Are you?
Which equals a porch, kind of.
Porch has a.
Well, which begs the difference. Why do you have, why do we have trellises in?
On the side. I'm just talking about the side. Yeah. I'm not talking about the front because we could already encroach in the front six feet. I mean, other.
Yeah, we are seeing awnings, little coverings, not necessarily always a trellis in, in side yards.
Talking about the side yard and trying to clarify that with what the other ordinance we're trying to put together, which is not to let, allow anything within five feet of the fences or the property line.
Right.
That's not kind of required for egress or, you know. Whatever. I would comment. I don't know how anybody else feels about that, but it seems like it would align with the five-foot setback that we were trying to do. There was, um, not much of a review. So I've always been curious about, uh, the crawl space being five foot six.
Crawl space five foot six?
Yeah, um, we, we, you know, as counting a floor area when it's not legal space. And where we go in the second floor, if it's not in the crawl space, why we count it as seven foot six? Why wouldn't the crawl space also be considered anything over seven foot six? Is counted towards your floor area ratio. I think that there's a doesn't make much sense there because we're talking about bulk.
Yeah.
Could be just to clarify, I don't think, we're not changing the definition of floor area anywhere, are we?
No.
Okay. So we're not, so the, the existing floor area ratio, the, the existing definition of floor area, you may not like.
No, no. No, I like it. What I'm not, what I'm not saying.
I don't know what they're doing there.
Is, I think that at page eighteen, you know, Roman numeral four.
Okay.
It doesn't make sense to count that as floor area if in other parts of the house, it's seven foot six. So I run into situations where people have big crawl spaces and you have to count the whole thing, you know, half of it for crawl, and it's not usable. And and the building code doesn't even allow it as living space. So it, I think it should be seven six, is what I'm saying.
Once, once again, a picture is worth a thousand paragraphs.
Um, yeah, that's on a, your, the pictures that you guys have for the, for the floor area where you guys show. You're on a slope.
Subterranean.
Yeah, yeah. There. Right. So.
So, so the intention of this is that so, so everything, everything to the left of the line is floor area. Okay? Everything to the left of the line is floor area. Everything in the right of the line is not. Cause the right of the line, so this is the dirt and this dirt is, is touching the exterior wall.
I understand. I'm saying it should be seven foot six to match what's up top, which is seven six. Because we're talking about bulk. Five foot doesn't make any sense whatsoever. It has no ramifications anywhere in the building code or anywhere in, anywhere else other than for bulk for the floor area. So why would we count it as floor area if it can't be used for floor area?
It can, it can be, this, this whole area can be used for living space. This is, this is a big old basement. Okay. So this, this is the basement. It's the big basement. And half of it is, is covered by dirt. So on the outside, I don't see that basement at all. If they're walking by this house, I don't see any of this. It's all dirt. But I do see this. And because there's, and, and, and this person's put a window here, let's say. And so when, when that, when I can see that and they put a window there, that's affecting me because I'm the neighbor right next door. And so therefore you have to call that floor area ratio. So you only get, you know, X amount of this. That, that's the reason, I think, of why they created this.
Well, it hasn't been in the past. People have gone in the basement and taken their tape measure and said it's over five feet, even if it was under gray. And some of my buildings that I built. So that, that's not exactly how it's been applied.
It has nothing to do with, it has nothing to do with the, the height, the distance between floor to ceiling. It's, it only has to do with distance between ceiling to dirt. I guess that's weird, right?
It's where the top plate, you got it, at the ceiling height and the dirt's coming this way. So wherever the five foot dimension is, everything that's come right, cause your building's rising in by the dirt, we're starting to count that as floor area. And the areas that are subterranean.
That's not how Buena Vista was measured because we had a, we had a yeah, because we had a little mechanic down there. So yeah, that's, I guess that's not reading.
But do you understand, do you understand the logic of that?
I, I do, but in essence, but is, is seven foot six the, the, the dimension of a height that is a bulk height or is it five feet? Cause that's giving them this message. It's saying that the lower area, it's five feet and at the upper area, it's seven foot six.
Seven foot six doesn't apply to this at all. Seven foot six just says, the building code says, if you're building a room.
It says right up there, seven foot six for the attic space.
Yeah, the third.
Yeah, but what I'm saying, it's a bulk thing. It's not a.
But in this?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. That's a different animal. This one here?
Well, I'm saying it should be applied the same to, to, to the basement or the attic because it's a bulk thing. You're looking at the side.
When you're living, someone living in here, someone with a bedroom in here affects the neighbor. Someone in a bedroom here is underground, doesn't affect the neighbor. Obviously, that, that's the logic behind it. You can have, you can have ten people living up here and everybody's gonna know about it. Windows and noise and whatever. You can have ten people down here and they're in a basement and they're not gonna be.
I guess what I'm saying, strictly speaking about the mass of the building, you're allowing the people that actually have more access to the neighbors, more space than the people below. And only can get five feet of exposed filler.
I think this would be great for the next code revision. Discussion. But I, I hear him saying Jim and.
The, the, the Rome level apartment could be ten foot in height. But the dotted line at five foot is the code issue that they've got in there, right? You're saying, so the seven six is irrelevant to the basement. That basement could be ten foot in height, but five foot showing. And so.
I was saying that, that the exposed part of the building should be, anything over seven foot six should be counted or a lot. Anyway, whatever. It's, it's not consistent. Yeah. It's not consistent to, to, to how you look at the bulk of a house. You got, so your lower floor can only have five feet showing and your upper floor can have seven foot six showing. And it's counted because that's how you count, like I said, you know, we counted the FAR, kind of told different.
We've only, we've only had floor area since two thousand nine or two thousand seven, but really not that long in Corredera.
Could you read what it says on the arrow, right?
This?
No, right down there, uh, down.
On the dotted line.
Yeah.
It says exterior grade abutting outside building wall. Exterior grade abutting outside building. So you say dirt.
Got it.
Dirt does that. Everything behind my piece of paper doesn't count towards FAR. All this does.
All right. Did we change the net, net land area, not net land, um, the wetland?
That area of land?
Yeah. So the, the hundred, the hundred foot buffer. Um, how are we, how are we gonna find that to existing communities that want to do additions and stuff? Because we've got two communities on the marsh. Is that gonna create problems in the future?
Do we have motion stuff?
Uh, six, page six.
Very thick thing.
Net area says we can't build within a hundred feet of wetlands. And we have a few communities. Is, is that gonna create problems for people in the future to develop?
Hasn't so far.
So nobody's, so because we have all existing properties that are built, like we don't have anybody building close to the marshland is like an actual new building.
It, well. Not, not in residential zones. That, that's only applicable to the, the, the first definition of that area of land that applies to, that doesn't apply to R one and R thing. Figure eleven.
Figure eleven doesn't apply to R one or, or any of the, any of the single-family residential neighborhoods?
Doesn't apply to R one, R one A and R one B and R one C or in the hills. Um, it, it would most likely, it could apply to commercial development. Um, it hasn't yet, but I'm aware of.
So if you guys don't think it'll, it'll bring about some sort of variance situation in, in mind, I just didn't want to be applied to existing things. Um, and then. I, I wanna talk a little bit about net area of land and how, how it does get calculated, because I, I've always not understood why right of ways and easements were taken out of land when we do our calculations on how much can be built? Because it can't be built upon anyway. So why do we take that out? Uh, why is that in the net area of land calculation?
You, you reduce gross land area by that area, that's a roadway easement or roadway, because you said that you can't build upon it.
Yeah, but you, but if, if you have an easement for your neighbor to go to his house on a flag lot, let's just say, whatever, then we, we can't build on it anyway, and if we're talking about floor area ratio and, and, and a lot coverage, then it doesn't really matter. Because the bulk of the building is gonna be the same whether we use that as part, I'm just saying you can, you can kind of eliminate an issue for someone trying to buy a piece of property that's got an easement on it and will be able to develop it. If you got a roadway going twenty feet, you have a fifty foot lot, you got a roadway going to the back of it, then half your lot you can't calculate for any lot coverage or any FAR, so I'm just curious why you do that.
Well, in turn.
I mean, this, this is numerals one through four, uh, and letter B um, were developed with FAR standards in two thousand nine, and that we are seeing roadway and easements subtracted from net, from gross land area on Metasuite. Um, that those roads, Metasuite overlaps their property boundaries, or boundaries extended to the street, so you're right, they can't build upon it. Um, but they, if we were to include it, then they could build that much larger of a house, even though they have an area of land that's smaller than what we're using as the number to calculate floor area or lot coverage.
But that's a, that's a more of a roadway, I'm talking, I'm talking about easements, like you buy a five thousand square foot lot, and you've got a, a bicycle or roadway easement through it, that's been there for a hundred years. Um, I don't see why we couldn't be able to build use the whole lot as the calculation for lot coverage and FAR, I just don't see there's.
You're paying taxes on it.
Correct, so that's what I'm getting at, like, I think you should be able to include that in your net area. That's my.
But I guess it doesn't reconcile for us with, you know, when, when we exclude areas that are less than six two NAVD, and it's really designed for the lots on Paradise Drive. And they extend way, way, way out to.
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying anything about the, that, I'm just saying I've got roadway easements, uh. Right of way easements is different than, than number four, I'm talking about number three.
Uh-huh.
Um, and yeah, number three is in particular, um, and number four. You know, if there's a you know, you, you obviously can't build on it, that area.
Right.
But it's gonna stay as open space, but I don't think it should be remo, be removed from someone's square footage that they can use as calculation for their FAR or their lot coverage.
So, so if you've got a property who's, you've got a property that's an acre in size.
Correct.
And, and a, a, a fourth, a fourth acre is, um owned by the town for the expansion of that roadway someday.
It's not owned by the town. I'm saying.
Okay, it's.
Private property that's an easement that's on your property, you should be able to use that in your calculation, if it's owned by the town. It's, it's different. Like what you were explaining with, oh, the roadways go over the property lines, well, that's a roadway, that's, that's a public roadway, I'm talking about some privately owned easement.
Okay, so maybe, so back to our flag lot, let's say, so I, I've got my acre here, and my neighbor has a flag lot here, and he, and he has he's taking a third of, a third of my property with his easement here, right?
Correct, well, we need a flag lot, he would just have access, because he doesn't.
Okay, either way, there, there's, there's no way I can ever build on this third, um, on this third acre. So in fact, I don't have an acre, I have, I have two thirds of acre.
No, 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 you're paying taxes on a whole acre.
I, I know, but I can't, but I'm never gonna be built, I'm never gonna be able to build on this.
Well, you could say that about setbacks too, Phil, you could say I can't build on my front side or back setbacks, so therefore I don't own that land, and we should only be looking at.
But the thing is that, take that off of Chapman, or off, yeah, Oakdale, there, there's that lot that alley goes in as an easement across the, the lots that are toward the corner, the corner. And to get, that person to get to their house, has to travel down across that eas, so that easement, you're saying should be counted for one of those properties, that buildable area.
Um, not, not being able to build on the area, but being able.
Counted as for the calculation.
For the calculation, so someone would be able to build a, a, a house that.
Then this becomes outsized, so it's a, you guys are the planners who went to school for all this stuff. Where is it in that?
How would it be outside, how would it be outsized if it was open space that was on that net?
Well, your floor area is a percentage of net area of land, it's, it's, let's just say it's forty percent. So if you lose a piece of that land because there's a roadway easement, that you're saying I could still build forty percent of my acre. And so your house is on a smaller area and much, much bigger, because you get to base your floor area upon the entire parcel including the, the roadway, so you can build a larger structure in a smaller space. Um, because floor area is based upon the gross area of the land, and that's, that's why we're saying exclude the roadway because that's the size of your partial planning, planning purposes, and for determining what your floor area ratio should, should be. So we're looking at the areas which structures could be present.
But if the easement were an underground utility easement, then you basically have the same amount of.
That's handled, yeah.
That's handled, okay.
Yeah. It's just the overland roadway, driveway, parking, flood control, pedestrian or bicycle accessways.
Sorry, Jim, we're not gonna be able to build that lot as big as you want.
That just doesn't make sense to me.
No, I.
I mean, because you still have your setbacks to the, to the roadways, um. You can't build on it, it's gonna be open space, it's just like having a driveway that runs just like if you had a, a garage in the back of your house and you had a driveway, what's the difference?
Well, now you can have, now you can have a three story building, right? Because your floor area, right, is based upon the bigger area of land, that's so it's not just about setbacks and it, it fitting where it needs to fit on the lot outside of your easement. We would say, we would include all, all of that land and come up with a number, forty percent of an acre, and that's how much floor area you can build. So I think there's lots of parameters in, as, in zoning code that's controlling when you can build a lot, setback, slot coverage, now we introduced floor area and it's not perfect, you can see we're changing how things are located, and maybe at some point it's time to look at, we've never studied whether it's working right, it feels like it's working right to us, we haven't had floor area variance, even though it's very clearly written here, this, there's nothing in this section should affect the ability of the planning commission to grant floor area variance.
I like the way you use an acre, because we don't have any acre lots, but, you know, we got like lots that are thirty feet wide, and if you put, I'm just saying, they're gonna really, really
Well, I, I totally see what you're saying, but I also understand that what the calculation in such way will provide more consistency across the neighborhood. Right, so if you, if you're looking from that perspective, the houses will be more consistent from one lot to another, whereas if we're taking the entire area for populations. Um, you might end up with a larger house, solar house, just because that particular lot is unique.
Take it to break, kind of ahead of people, granting people easements is what it's gonna do, um, anyway. So that was the, that was one, look, I got a score on that one. So the new, the new planning, uh, the new parking.
State code.
State code.
Yep.
So now all properties currently that have like one car garages and are parking in their driveways don't have to provide any more additional parking.
Correct.
So we don't, not gonna have those variances anymore, because that was another thing that.
Correct.
Correct.
Comes up every.
For new construction, though, we can still apply our existing parking requirements. It's just for expansion, renovation, remodeling, that we can't say, you need, now you need more parking, so um, when you see an application for a new home. Um, we can, whether it's two thousand square feet or four thousand square feet, we can require the two or three spaces for, for.
Why don't you require the, the parking to be in, out of the front yard setback, if we have driveways in the front yard setback? And people are parking there. Parking spit, the required two parking spaces need to be out of the front yard setback.
Right. I think generally speaking, people, we.
Except Christmas Tree Hill.
Jurisdictions don't wanna see cars. A lot of jurisdictions, you need to have two, um, covered parking spaces. Some jurisdictions, you have to park your car in your two covered parking spaces. Not very many, but you know, real tight HOAs say you can't, you can't park your car in your driveway or on the street, it's gotta be, um, behind your because that makes the neighborhood look nicer.
Pointing to some lots are big enough to have, uh, the parking out of the front setback.
That's what I'm saying, it just, but with the new state code, as long as, most of the stuff that we're gonna get are remodeled.
Yeah.
Properties, but for new homes, it might be an issue, to try and get that squeezed in there. I was just curious about.
It needs to require only one covered space up until nineteen seventy eight. Seventy eight zoning ordinance added the second uncovered space, so that's probably why we see so much non-conforming parking of single car garages, because we changed the rules and, um, after the car revolution happening, um, so we add flexibility for ADU parking, that could be in tandem or in the front setback. SB nine has tandem parking, I think, uncovered, um, so maybe the maybe something that we should look at.
Okay. And then, specifically the Christmas Tree Hill, um revisions, um. What got left in there, which kind of brings up a lot of community problems. Um, single story construction is strongly preferred, except where a second story can step back into the slope. And minimize the environmental impact, well, the environmental impact of going into a a hill is a heck of a lot more than going up a story. Um, I'm wondering if that single story construction is strongly preferred, preferred can be removed from, from that, because I think it everybody, all the neighbors think that that's what people should be building.
I'm looking for why that is, do you?
Three E, under the Christmas Tree Hill ordinances, page twenty five?
Oh, yeah.
Page twenty five.
Second sentence.
Yeah, maybe, I think we had a commission meeting where someone came in like, oh, you're supposed to only build two story, uh, one, a single stories, and that's not how the findings were read, but it was.
It shows up in a couple places in the zoning code.
Correct, in the general plan.
Well, the general plan encourages it, I don't know if it should be in the code, uh, in our zoning ordinance.
Yeah, I think.
Should be an encouragement or a design guideline, but not necessarily something that's specific into the findings and into into the ordinance.
It says it, but it doesn't mandate it or say shall, um, it says.
It's, it's elsewhere in, I think the design review section maybe, where it says single story design is encouraged. Um.
In the guidelines.
Because of guidelines.
Prefer, not encourage.
Yeah.
You know, like, we're preferring that, kind of saying like, you should do one if we're not gonna approve it, like. Um, and I, I, I personally don't like the language about minimizing environmental impact by going to the hill. Case at all.
We could, certainly. We could strike that, that's the wish of the commission.
That's it. Are you guys okay with that?
Yeah, it's fine, I, one way or another, I think that most architects are gonna walk in and say, here's what I wanna do. You don't have to react to, tech has to react to that guidance, but, um I, I, I get to see an architect walk in and said, well, the code says I can only do this.
Not about the architects, about the neighbors, like, coming here and saying that, well, this is strongly preferred, and you did do it because it was strongly preferred, it's in the ordinance.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, um, and then elevated decks, uh, above ten feet. Um, is that measurement taken from the foundation or the edge of the deck?
It's from grade to the surface of the deck, the decking surface.
So that doesn't allow for a lot of fall, um, less than eight percent, if it's like a ten foot deck. So pretty much all decks will be coming to design review.
Right now, the deck that's fifteen feet in height or greater comes through for design review, and that's measured to the top of the railing. So that, so railing is forty two inches, um, so four feet, so it's around eleven-ish, right now, is the standard, so we could buy that. Whatever that. And that, we're in a good spot with that, we think. Um.
Just trying to eliminate a, a bunch of design reviews.
So, but you're talking about a closed surface deck, a roof deck, not a open deck.
A, open deck, a porch in the back, so you know, if it's at ten feet and you're measuring it from grade and your first floor is eight foot six, because you gotta be up from the grade, you're but you're only allowed like eight inches of fall from the house to the edge of the deck before it has to come to design review.
I'm kind of meeting about that, but we did agree to the ten foot.
Yeah, but I didn't know where the measurement was.
Ah.
I, I kind of agreed to it as, if it hit the foundation there, but now, I'm just looking at it, it's just gonna I think it's too low and it's gonna come across.
Where's the graphic for this, guys?
I have no graphic.
In the deck chapter. You don't see a lot of design reviews for decks.
Have people just do them? Well, we, we don't see, we don't see a design review for decks alone, we see a design review for an addition. And that addition happened, which means design review and happened to include a deck, so you look, we're looking at a whole thing.
So we, we changed that to ten feet, is that what I'm hearing? Cut from eleven feet at that mid. I guess.
I don't recall, um, I think that what Tracy was saying is that it's eleven.
So right now, with the forty two inch railing, because my math is not. That's eleven, six, a, a deck, because as we're as we're measuring today, we look at the height of the deck inclusive of the railing to figure out, is it fifteen feet? Yes or no, um, yes, design review, no, building permit, and so with this change, we're, we're not gonna use the railing to measure anymore. So that means that
Mm-hmm.
We're measuring to ten, we're staying ten feet, and if you don't look at the railing today, that's an eleven foot six inch deck.
I got, I got. Yes. I just wanted everybody to be aware that, that most decks are gonna come in front of us at ten feet. Because there's not a lot of fall from the house. So if it doesn't bother anybody, then we'll leave it at ten feet.
Okay, but for me, I'm, I'm good with it, Jim.
And then, um, well, just the last one I have, the side yard setback on slope is not defined. And it's problematic. Um, because it doesn't say uphill side.
Yeah.
Or downhill side, and I think it needs to be advised to say uphill side, so that people on the downhill side don't have to move their house even further in the view.
Not a fan of that either, um. The way it reads and how you're writing, how you, some houses are stepping down the hill this way, like Renata Drive. And others are, the nearest house is behind them, and it's more in ten percent slope, and they're having setback, they're side setbacks, when there's the nearest houses up here, so.
Should be the uphill side person, because I think what they're trying to do is allow light to penetrate down in the lot, I was wondering if that was something we would entertain, because that, that, that house that we did on, um, the Spanish style house. Beautiful house that, Andrew and.
Or Free Chapman.
Yeah, it seemed like they just dug it into the hill, and it was like they they didn't need to do that, like, because of that ordinance, it made them, they made them push it into the made the setback, I think, ten or twelve feet, I don't recall. Just think it needs to read like the uphill, if we're gonna keep that in there.
Can you say again? You would just shift the word uphill, or?
Well, if it's, we're doing it the side yard, it just should say the uphill the, the neighbor adjacent to the uphill side. Right, so if you're, you're like this. And only if it's sloping side to side, because it reads like if it's sloping this way too, you still need to set. And only if it's sloping side to side because it reads like if it's sloping this way too, you still need to set it back.
Yes, we've noticed that.
Yeah. So, you know, uphill.
I think we can wordsmith that.
Yeah, yeah. It's the uphill side adjacent neighbor. Our property is where the setback needs to happen. If we're going to keep that ten percent there. Ten percent is not a lot.
No, it's not a lot.
No, yeah. I wouldn't want to increase in that, but I'm not going to push my. I don't know what the right number is without sending it back to staff. I think revising that language is easy, thank.
It was a time check. We're about eight minutes away before we have to do a vote to.
Yes, and I'm just going to go there. Thank you. Because tonight of all nights, I'm not game to go on. So but I'm taking a straw poll there. So that's my vote.
What?
And.
Want to have come back in fifteen for just like an hour?
I don't know. What else?
Did you understand? I'm sorry, Peter. Say again.
There's nothing else on the future agenda. You guys don't have anything brewing.
You mean for your next meeting?
Yeah.
Your next meeting. Correct. That'll be.
We have an extra week, so.
Eighteen. What?
Okay. So what was that business is that you guys took Kobe's notes of little changes here and there to talk about it now. I didn't write them down, but I don't know if you feel something over citing those or just incorporating them into new ordinance. We don't report the planning commission, I mean, for the council. So you know, there would involve the commissioners here to trust you guys to forward it without another computer. There's many little tweaks here.
Yeah, I think there's enough substance that we would want to make sure it's very clearly played out in your clarification. Because I think there's, there are little parking lot items that we may, you know, may need to go back to also. I just want to make sure everyone has gotten their issues resolved.
Our issues. Has everyone removed all their their tabs?
Were your heavy issues? So that would be great.
But that would give us an opportunity to revise the ordinance and.
Brilliant.
Okay.
And I do, we still have a few minutes. The issue generated about possibly having a percentage of facade that could be bay areas. Does anybody feel that's important?
Bay window. Percentage of a bay window can only be X percent of a given facade.
If you look at the San Francisco code, they've got a pretty good example. Because since you've got multiple bay windows on a facade, they'll just basically say, you know, any bay window on a facade can't be cumulative percentage of.
They call out a width and a percentage of the total.
Width, I think it's a right thing. Yeah. And it kind of makes sense because it makes you know, pretty good job of their bay windows in San Francisco.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can look at that.
We can find that.
The only other thing since I'm not going to be here on the fourteenth that I would say if we were voting that way, we vote against this on the issue of allowing a neighbor to write a letter. And and I think it's an equity issue. One person has a nice neighbor, two houses down, the neighbors don't get along, they don't get, and as Amy just said, we want to be sure we aren't doing something different for one property owner than another. We have a process that's design review. If a neighbor doesn't have a problem with the window or the fence, then they're not going to have any problem with designing. We're just going to overstand. But there's at least a legitimate process that's equal for everyone. So.
Does your commission want to take a straw vote on that? Just that issue alone? So we have the direction.
Sure. That Peter wants that.
That's up.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. And that that what we're saying then is that instead of codifying that in some way, that it's reverting to design review process. Right? That's what we're talking about, right?
Yes, yes.
And is that specifically for fences?
And when in the window and where we're allowing that in the.
So so maybe a clear way to say it is removing the option of applicants receiving permission per neighbors for the project.
For those two issues.
Yeah. Okay, but for all issues. Margaret?
I I mean, I agree with Danny.
Okay. Mr. Rizzo?
I don't have a problem with.
You agree with Daniel or you don't have a problem with the way it is today?
No, you're you're agreeing with Daniel.
Yeah. We heard the same.
Right. So we have sort of a unanimous response.
Okay. Neighborhood approval will be.
Yes.
I could miss the fourteenth meeting. Be cautious.
You've been always drawing remotely.
From France? No, thanks.
Good idea.
In a cave.
That would be what, four AM or something?
Yeah.
So.
I'm sure there's some.
Procedure wise, if we continue. Procedure wise, if we're continuing this item, we state that obviously and then we don't have to notice.
Do it a date, time, certainty. So yeah, seven PM on May, is it fourteen?
Yes. Yes. So I'm moving to motion, motion for that.
We need to have that motion to continue this to the date certainty. It's the April of March, May.
May fourteenth.
May fourteenth.
So.
All right, second.
Second.
Okay. Ready? One, two, three.
Hi. Well, when it's nine fifty eight. Just made it.
Okay. That's great. So you guys did an amazing lot of work.
Yeah, this is really.
Slow.
Amazing.
I don't know how many times you've read the existing language.
I haven't memorized now. We're about to change it now.
Yeah.
Lose any future contests. As long as you know pages, that's all that matters.
Yeah, I thought you had heads up glasses or something because you're reciting that everything is so great. It's pretty amazing. You can just paddle this stuff off.
It's good encyclopedia. But I forget why I wore my glasses, why I went into a room.
Oh, you know, what I forgot to do is to say, is there anybody online for public comment?
Actually, there, there was somebody named Porta Madera. I have a feeling I know who that was.
They went away. I so far, I'm sorry, I forgot. I thought about it. I'll have another opportunity. And so, you know, we didn't get to approve any meeting note, meeting notes. We didn't hear about anything from planning staff, but it's been time for Bonzo.
We'll make a, we'll make a planning staff announcement. I am retiring in July. So let's get this done.
On the fourteen.
We need a float.
I thought you were supposed to get your new car after you retire. You got that this year.
Right? Nope. That's correct.
How long have you worked here?
It'll be ten, it'll be ten years in September. And I've been in the planning world for about thirty.
Wow.
What's your next career? What are you looking?
Volunteering, volunteering and traveling.
Nice.
Good.
Fiction of my house.
A C word consultant. You're not going to do that.
The what?
Consultant. You're not a consultant.
One more button.
I buy it.
Drop the card.
You got to come to the opening. You're going to retire before we get in and out.
No, I think we'll.
Yeah, Phil, you're the one who promised me a bigger chair.
Work on that.
Yeah, yeah, it's never been bad. So with that said, what's the Germans meeting? Thank you.